Connected? Paul Colery?
Yes, I'm here, Madam Chair.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I'll start the meeting then. Good evening and welcome to the Cohasset Planning Board Meeting of December 2nd, 2020. I'd like to welcome the citizens and the staff and the board members, and I will ask board members to do a roll call by alphabet. Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan?
I'm here.
Paul Colery?
Paul Colery here.
Paul Grady?
Paul Grady present.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter present.
I want to recognize Lauren Lin, the Director of Planning for Cohasset. Eve Tapper, our Support Planner for the Harbor Project. And Kara Norris, who is our Legal Counsel, and she will speak after the second, in the second part of the meeting. I want to lay out just briefly how the meeting's going to go and ask Lauren to show the slide I made. Thanks, okay, and I'll just ask you to move it forward. Can I just see Slide 2, please? This is not an intelligible slide for all of you to see. I wanted to just share it with you. Eve Tapper made it for us, and it's a sequence diagram of the process that we'll be going through during the Harbor deliberations. Next slide. Today, what we're going to do is have two parts. We have an A&R that we need to review, and then we will move into the discussion of the Harbor Plan. In order to make the meeting effective, what I'm going to do is to ask that we use the hand, raised hand function. If you wish to speak, I will call people in turn. There'll be no interruptions or talking over one another. If that happens, then we, you know, if things are really messy, then we're going to end up muting people, which I prefer not to do. And Lauren will, after I finish, she'll explain to the public how they can participate in the Q&amp;A function. And then we'll move on to the A&R presentation, which I presume Mr. Morris is going to be the, who's going to be presenting for Morris Engineering, Lauren?
The applicant is Jason Culpa, and I see he's in the attendee section. I will promote him when we're ready.
All right, great. So would you like to review to the public how they can comment?
Certainly, thank you. So for members of the public who wish to speak on an application, there is a question and answer function at the bottom of your screen. If you could type in your name and address when we call for a public comment, we will then take your comment, and if you'd like to speak directly with the board, we can make accommodations for that. But you should utilize the question and answer function to let us know that you'd like to speak or to input your comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So let's begin with the A&R, which is a review of a project on Nichols Road. Can you promote the speaker, please?
Hello?
Hello, good evening, Mr. Culpa.
Good evening.
Are you planning to present your, the diagram, Mr. Culpa? Do you want us to put it up for the?
Would you mind putting it up? I thought, I was expecting Morris Engineering to attend, but I will do my best to walk us through the diagram.
All right.
It looks like Rob is in the Q&amp;A for Morris. That might be helpful if he's added, if that's okay.
I've just promoted him, thank you. I'm sorry, I was looking for Jeff Hassett's name.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too.
I'll let Rob drive.
All right, hey, everyone. I have a A&R plan here for Jason. I'm here on behalf of Morris Engineering and Jason Culpa and 34 Beacon Street LLC, which are the property owners. We are doing a land swap between these two parcels. It's an even land swap, no change to frontage, no change to area. All buildings still comply to all zoning requirements. So should be an A&R plan for those reasons, and is there any questions for the board?
Clark Brewer, please use the hand tool, Clark, if you can.
Where's the, where is it?
It would be on your, if you go to Participants, click on that. It should come up in the right side of your screen. I shouldn't tell you if I didn't try it myself. Yeah, so if you click on Participants up, it will come on the panel of the people who are here, and it should say Invite, Mute Me, and Raise Hand. Do you see that?
I see it down at the bottom.
Okay, great. So in the future, if you'd use that, that'd be perfect. Clark, you'd like to make a comment?
Yeah. This was A&R'd about four months, eight months ago, and I think February or March.
Correct.
And, and so it, what it looks like is the, the very narrow strip on the bottom of the sheet is just getting a little bit longer, and there's more house for that rear, more room for that rear dwelling.
Correct.
And then the, the space towards, and a butter on the left-hand side of the sheet, 400 Atlantic Ave, that, that property line gets bigger.
No, tho, those, that parcel is not changing, just Lot E and Lot D. 400 Atlantic isn't a butter to the property. That's not one of our clients. That, that property is not affected.
Not bigger, it's just that that, that's where the, the land swap is, all along, it's, it's on the, from the, you're getting more land on the left-hand side and losing more land in the middle.
For the property out front. That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. So this is, this is a pretty straightforward internal property line adjustment. There's, doesn't appear to be any zoning issues. So if there's any other questions or comments, I'd suggest the planning board members get to it.
I don't see anyone on the planning board wishing to make further comment, so I would ask a planning board member to make a motion to approve this A&R.
I did have my hand on it.
Do you have your hand up, Tom? Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Tom Callahan?
I was curious why this is being done twice in one year.
The property has changed hands, and 100 Nichols Road is, is doing some improvements in some landscaping to the rear of the property. So the property out front is doing a land swap to give them a little more room to do some stuff behind the house.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Can I ask for someone to make a motion to approve this A&R?
I'll make a motion to approve the A&R for property, what is it, 100 Nichols Road?
Do I have a second?
Second?
All favor, please state your name and your vote. Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan?
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the rest of the meeting, in which we will be discussing the Harbor Village Overlay Project, and this is a continuation of the hearing. The planning board members have submitted comments for deliberation, and the applicant is here, and I am under the impression that the applicant would like to start the discussion. Mr. Goldrick, would you like to make comments? Excuse me, wait a minute, I need to make a, let me step back one second. Before I, we actually do this, I'd like to call on Ms. Karis Norris, North, to make some introductory comments to everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. So after speaking with Ms. Lynn and the, the plan for the meeting tonight, I just wanted to set some sort of big picture overview points for the coming discussion of a decision and the decision process. I would like to just touch on the fact that, that myself and staff are here as a resource to help guide you through the process and to make sure that the, the various guidelines and elements of the, the bylaw and legal requirements are, are touched and, and addressed appropriately. But it is ultimately your decision and, and your findings and, and your determinations. So just a, you, you should have seen, there was a memo circulated, and I believe Ms. Lynn circulated it previously in advance of the last meeting, that laid out some of the specific things that have to be addressed with in the finding section. So a finding section should methodically go through those various lists and address each of those points. The, the other piece that, sort of big picture piece that I, I want to talk about a little bit is that a decision should be focused on the evidence that was presented in the hearing and the board's evaluation and consideration of that evidence. I, I think it's sort of focusing on, on individual opinions is obviously not recommended, but it's really board determinations and decisions. And you're limited really to the project bounds and boundary. Just some general guidance about conditions themselves. Conditions have to fit within the scope of the bylaw and that these issues that are set before you, they are constrained by the authority of the planning board. So the, the planning board cannot create new authority for itself through the permit conditions, nor can it vary the requirements of the bylaw through permit conditions. Where there is discretion, the, the board can exercise its discretion, but it, it can't change particular requirements of, of the bylaw. I think that there is probably a, going to be a good bit of discussion about the Chapter 91 issues. And I understand the concern about wanting to preserve the open space beyond the period of one year of a Chapter 91 license, which is, you know, a 20 to 30-year license. I've asked applicant counsel to share sort of sample conditions, and I think we can have a discussion about how to best resolve that concern. Excuse me. And then the other point I wanted to make generally is that any performance bond will have to be negotiated. This is not a subdivision, so it's sort of different, there isn't the same requirement for a performance bond here, but that doesn't mean that it can't be negotiated and isn't an important piece. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is whether you continue to keep the hearing open or you close it is up to the discretion of the board. I think you can do either under the law, if you want to continue to have discussions. I do want to note that if you close the hearing under the Cohasset zoning bylaw, then there's a 90-day requirement in which to complete the decision and, and get it issued. So just understand that those are some of the time constraints that you would be looking at once you close the hearing. So those were the points I wanted to make tonight, and obviously I'm here to answer your questions at any point during the meeting this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. North. Lauren, would you put up my slides again just for a minute? I'd like to look at the, I think, the third one. Just so people know what we're up to. Okay, so this is the layout for what's going to happen. I've explained how we're going to communicate. We've asked individuals to use the raise hand signal, which is on the right-hand side. You click Participants, and then it should come up in your right box where all the participants who are revealed are listed. This is basically how the meeting will proceed. We've been addressed by Ms. North. We are now going to hear from the applicant and representatives. Then we will proceed to have member comments. The way we're going to handle the member comments is each member will go by alphabetical order. We will go through each member's entire list of conditions, and we will debate or discuss each one of them, and, and we will put aside those for which we do not have full sentiment, and we will carry forward those for which we have strong sentiment. And this is the way we're going to essentially get the information down to one, one concluding sum of materials that we will then work with going, going forward. The expectations, as, as Ms. North mentioned, we can leave the meeting open, which would allow us to continue to include information. We have been advised that is, is a positive decision, that, that would be a good idea to follow. And then at the end of the meeting, we will discuss the expectations for the 1216 meeting. So with that said, I would like to ask Mr. McGoldrick, and Mr. McGoldrick, would you indicate if there'll be more than one individual from your team speaking tonight?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Ted Lubitz will be helping with some of the presentation, as well as Adam Brodsky.
Thank you. So when, when both Mr. Lubitz and Mr. Brodsky wish to speak, will you please introduce them?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, thank you for seeing us again tonight. As we left the last meeting, the indications from the board were to follow up on some additional questions that each of the board members had, and then also hopefully have staff and board members looking to start looking at conditions going forward. So we did respond with a, a number of written responses, as we have been doing all along. I think tonight we just would like to touch on a couple of them that seem to be percolating and just wanting to sort of get to a, a position on those kind of major issues. And then as you're well aware, a lot of what this project would require is additional support from the planning board as we move forward. The timeline is such that should the board choose to close the hearing tonight, and then either tonight and/or the next meeting spend on deliberations and hopefully a vote, there still is other boards that we have to be in front of, including the zoning board, which we had our first meeting with last night. We are back, and they told us we're back for a decision in January. We have a, a small conservation commission we have to go in front of for one issue. And then, of course, the Chapter 91 license. So during all those additional hearings and timeline, a number of the issues that have been raised by the board can and will be worked on between the board and ourselves, and that's why we've asked for some of those to be conditions of the approval. So I'd like to have Ted Lubitz talk about the first issue as we followed up on our letter the other day about the, the building height. Ted?
Thank you, George. I'm just going to share my screen. So at the last meeting, there's a discussion about the height of the proposed buildings compared to the existing structure at 124, specifically the hotel. And it was recommended that we try to visually depict the height compared to the existing height of the hotel. So we put a post on top of the existing building, and it's highlighted here. It's somewhat tough to see, but as you can see, there's an arrow there. I've got some more photos that I'll show as well. I apologize, we put this up last week, and it was blown over in the windstorm on Monday. So if members went down there to look at it yesterday or early today, it was, it was blown over. So, but we refixed it up there, so it's there. If people want to go and take a look at it, it is on site and will remain up there for the foreseeable future. So that is one photo of it. Show some more. It was also depicted in images that we provided on July 8th and August 26th, and they're also included in the memo that we sent two days ago. Specifically, I want to point out that the peak of the slope roofs is four feet taller than the top of the flat roof, which is here, but they are one foot lower than the mechanical equipment that exists today. And obviously with, we will not have a monolithic roof line. There'll be slope roofs, so there'll be a lot more articulation and sunlight coming through. And also, as we step back on the third floors in our proposed design, it actually has a different perspective, so it'll be, it will actually probably appear not as tall as this building when you're at street level. This is a photo, obviously, in front of Glass Harbor and sign, looking up. Obviously, when you look up, it appears less tall as you get closer to the building. I had a photo, I didn't include it, but actually when you are standing even closer, the top of the line actually disappears and fades off. So here's another perspective to showing that. So again, we welcome you to go down and, and check it out. We'll be there, and and any, I guess we'll deal with questions after that, but with that, I'll turn it back over to George.
Thank you very much, and, and will you please give those photos to Ms. Lynn, so we can have them in our files?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the other issues that came up last time was the request for additional 3D modeling. All of the information we sent is, is in a 3D modeling now. We did speak with the architects, and to do really high-end things that are done mostly in urban areas, cities, and everything else, is a $30,000 to $50,000 line item. So we just don't believe that we can afford it at this point in time. The, the other issue in terms of the open space in the park, it's obviously intention of the project that the park remain open to the public. The Chapter 91 license requires us to do so, but we will go over and above that, and we will provide easements to the town for not only the area that's within the Chapter 91, but we're also giving public space outside of Chapter 91. As an example, the entire margin street corner of the property. That's not within Chapter 91, but we are willing to give easements in that area, as well as all the other public space to the town to buffer what's required by Chapter 91. The, the last thing we just want to talk about, which has had a lot of discussion, is the term vibrancy. Webster determines vibrancy as the state of being full of energy and life. We understand that this is zoned under a business district. We understand that years ago, over 50 years ago, we had a candy store, a liquor store, Polly Seagill, Annie's Soda Fountain, Hugo's Shack, Kimball's, and Seahorse Coffee Shop. Those are the types of retail that we're looking to bring back. We have space for over half a dozen retail tenants to come in to the brick and mortar part of the building. But as we know, what's happened in the last 50 years with retail, and especially with the COVID issues that's happened, is that, and with, obviously, the internet, is retail is on its downward cycle. So what we did was we studied what works, what brings people to areas. And the result was, and the, the findings that we had from all over New England, was that open space is what brings people together. You can have a lot of brick and mortar with a beauty shop and a retail real estate office or a medical office there. That only brings people down to the area that need to go to those services. The open space that we're providing, which again is almost five times more than what's required, brings everyone down to the waterfront. And again, it was the prime objective of the Harbor Committee, and the plan was to open up the harbor to the town. So we're opening up not just the 10 and 25 feet that was required, but more than almost 50 feet in a lot of the areas. It's a half-acre park, four times larger than the nearest park down the road. We're not just giving open space and leaving it there. We are bringing retail uses to, in, within the buildings and also seasonal kiosks. And as you know, we've had conversations with local groups such as CSCR and CMI and the Historical Society, and local merchants who are willing and looking forward to being able to bring their wares and the information about their groups down to the harbor front. And these outdoor kiosks will provide that. And the indoor retail space that we have will provide coffee shops and others for other areas. I've mentioned to you earlier that we've been in discussions with a group that owns a couple of these, one in Norwell and one in Situate, where not only can you go in and get coffee and lunch, but you can also have small meetings. That's what creates the vibrancy. That's what creates the life, is having something that's available to everyone. Not someone looking to get their haircut, and not someone to look to get, to buy a house from a retail agent. If we look at what's happened downtown over the last 15 years, the majority of spaces that have been occupied have been real estate offices and medical offices. We, when we took over Red Lion, wanted something different. We had a proposal for a medical office for more money, and we decided to go with what we felt was really important for downtown, which was a general store. So we've shown the town that we have the town's best interest by getting the anchor and sale together. It's the same type of mentality we're going to bring down to the harbor. So we're creating vibrancy. It's not just bricks and mortar. It's bricks and mortar. It's open space. It's creating programs. It's working with the garden club. It's working with the Historical Society, CSCR and CMI. Those are the programs that we're working on and will be working on to create the vibrancy that everyone is looking for. There was a lot of other, other issues that we addressed in the letter, but instead of taking the time tonight, I thought I'd turn it over to Adam Brodsky to just clean up a couple of other issues. Adam?
Thank you, George. Madam Chair, good evening. Adam Brodsky and I represent the applicant this evening. Ms. North kindly invited me to speak to the Chapter 91 issue and the conditions that could be anticipated through that process. And I'd just like to remind the board that we actually included license conditions for a recent project that was approved in Hull in our November 5, 2020 submission. And so copied in there are the public access provisions that were contained in the recent Chapter 91 license that has been issued for the A Street Marina and its public walkway to give you an example of the typical conditions, which address hours of operation, the ability of the property owners to reasonably regulate it, but importantly, from the board's perspective, to assure that, in fact, the public will have access to those that, that public access network, which George indicated. Our intention is also to include the other components in addition to the 10-foot-wide captain's walk. And so I'm always happy to speak about Chapter 91, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions. But I just wanted to remind the board that we actually provided you with the standard conditions that DEP uses in connection with Chapter 91 licensing of public access networks. And, and the only other thing I'd like to speak on briefly is simply just to add our thoughts with respect to process. We don't have any additional information to formally present to the board, but we're here to answer any questions. But our goal is to, and request of the, the board, close the public hearing this evening with one proviso, is that we still have the ability to discuss with the board any conditions, and that was one of the alternatives that was discussed the last meeting. We're led to believe that the board does not wish to discuss specific conditions this evening, and we understand that. But we have been presenting with, I think, no fewer than four different versions of conditions from various board members, as well as staff versions. And so if we have a second request this evening is that perhaps And so if we have a second request this evening is that perhaps the board might use this time tonight to perhaps workshop. So at the end of the evening, we have a, at least one set of conditions that we can then review, comment on and discuss the next public hearing. And that would be very helpful from the applicant's perspective because it's difficult for us to respond to at least four sets of comments, some of which we don't know or ultimately are going to end up in a decision. But it would be helpful to us to have something to work from at the end of this evening that would give us an opportunity to be prepared for the next public hearing. So again, we're here and I'm happy to answer any questions with respect to chapter 91. And we're here to answer any other factual questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. So let me ask board members if they have any questions of either Mr. Brodsky, Mr. McGoldrick or Mr. Lubitz at this time. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing, Mr. Brodsky. Part of why you have four different versions is because we're not allowed to collaborate on this and compile them as it relates to open meeting law. And so we produced each individual set of comments with the expectation that we would be grooming the list into some kind of a final shape. But we do appreciate the fact that it probably looks quite daunting with the number and also the length of each one of them. But it was a situation in which we couldn't combine them actually because we couldn't deliberate about them. All right. So is, are the applicants at this time finished with commentary?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the clarifications. Thank you for your memo. It was very detailed and very helpful. And thank you for the additional effort that you undertook in order to provide us with information that serves as a background. Tom Callahan?
I had my hand raised on that side then, just so you know. I just, I wanted to ask Ted, since he spoke about.
Pick your hand away. Can you take your hand away from your mouth? Because it makes it really hard to hear.
Just wanted to ask Ted, I had a question about the height. I'm not going to belabor whether the building is too high or not. I just want to get the number right. I'm looking at notes that probably date from August. When you remember the original set of plans said the height was something on one set page and it said another measurement on the second page and there was a difference. And so I remember asking these questions and I have notes here that says the ridge difference is five feet. I have notes that 87 might be as much as six feet higher than the existing building and 124 could be one to two feet higher. I just want to get the number right so that when we put it in a condition of what's the elevation that these buildings are allowed to be at, we just have the right number. So I appreciate, I went out and saw the stick this morning as it blew over and I appreciate you doing that. It really helps. But just through that, this whole process, we've just had a lot of conflicting numbers about what it is. I would just like to know what the definitive final top elevation of both buildings, all three buildings is so that it can be incorporated into a condition.
So I
Just a minute, please. Thank you. I want to ask, as people speak, you put your hand up, then when you're done, you put your hand down. All right, Mr. Lubitz?
So with respect to the ridgeline heights, we should refer to the architectural set of drawings that we provided at our last submission, which I'm happy to pull up now. With respect to the relative heights above 124 Helm Street, we've been, you know, it's been calculated to be four feet above the top of the current roof line at that facility.
Okay.
It says though, it's one foot on average lower than the highest mechanical point on that building. So the mechanical equipment is taller than ultimately what we're proposing. And as you know, there's no mechanical equipment that protrudes higher than the top of the ridgeline in our proposal as well. So that will all be screened and out of view. So you will not see that.
Okay. And at 87, you know, we focused so much in these hearings about buildings on the harbor side, we kind of ignored 87. What's the final height above the existing building at 87?
I don't have that detail. I was under the impression that it was the hotel. I, you know, just.
No, no, I understand how you got that impression, but you know, and we haven't heard a lot from the butters to 87, which surprises me.
So on, on that topic, I have met with multiple times and presented to the butter, 85 Elm Street. They actually were one of the first people to write a comment letter to the board. And we have met, they're actually friends of mine and they are very supportive of the project. And so I know if they had any direct concerns, they would have expressed them by now. But they are in favor of the project. And I also have met with them to talk about the concerns that have been raised about screening that property line with respect to, you know, new plantings along there. And we have agreed that we will work together as we want screening as well. So we're actually creating more of a buffer than exists today between the property lines. With respect to the sort of mature plantings that are there and communicated to us that the 85, the butter would actually like those taken down because they're old and have the ability to fall on their house, which they just recently are renovating. And so they would very much like to see those trees come down and replaced with something that is more appropriate.
Okay. Well, obviously you saw my condition about that. Generally not in favor of taking down mature trees to move. Obviously consider that.
All right. Thank you. And let's try to keep our, you know, back and forth limited. Thank you, Mr. Lubitz and Mr. McGoldrick. Thank you for putting your hand up.
I mute.
I got the hand up, but I couldn't unmute it. So in terms of the height, we understand the concerns that some of the board members have had, but please realize that we are not asking for any kind of waivers or variance on the height. We designed and spent a lot of time trying to fit the project within the existing zoning that was passed by the town. In fact, is what I think is pretty much a zoning all over town in terms of the height. So we're within all the zoning. Understand the concerns of the existing building and how ugly it's been for 50 years. You know, and we thought about that. And that's one of the reasons why you don't see that kind of monolithic roof. The roof lines are broken up significantly differently than what's there today. Finally, two other issues. One is that we're actually not going to be the tallest building in the neighborhood. The condominium building in margin street to our north is actually taller than our buildings. So we're not even going to be the biggest guy on the block. And then finally, I believe that the board received a letter today from about 16 direct, most of them, I think 14 of the 16 are direct butters to the project. And if it hasn't already been read into the record, I think you'll find the support is there. I again, have not been involved in a project before, especially of this size, that has had zero, zero butters complaining about it. We haven't found one. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So with that, the applicants have concluded their comments and we will now move into the board members sets of conditions. And I'd like to ask Clark Brewer to begin with his discussion. And remember, each one of these is to be described, then discussed, and then a sentiment of the board will be taken.
Okay, I have 16 conditions that I think should be incorporated into the or 16 line items. Not all of them are conditions, but the first thing is in the applicant's letter, he identifies 10 or more conditions of approval. And my concern about having a lot of conditions of approval is that we may be kicking a can down the road. You may get your special permit approval with these conditions, but if we have to come back to content and considerable with some considerable detail, I think there's some risk to the applicant. And, you know, I just don't, I just don't know if there's, if there's a couple of conditions that are kicked down the road for after an approval or a vote. If there's a couple, like, you know, signage and HVAC unit sound data, that's relatively minor. But if there's a dozen or two dozen things that have to be re-reviewed with the final revised site plan. I think even if the general aspect of the project is, is approved, I think that there's, that there would need to be some serious discussions and negotiation, which might be better as a part of the special permit process as opposed to a follow-up to the special permit process. Because I don't know, I mean, if you have a dozen or a couple of dozen conditions, then that are going to be reviewed later or approved by the planning board later. What are we really, what are we really approving at this point? And I understand you want to put a line in the sand or the applicant wants to put a line in the sand. But that was my first comment. How many is too many? To be decided. And I think, I think with this special permit, every, every condition or approval that is a detail of the project should be decided by the planning board unless there's some unusual circumstance that it gets assigned to someone with the expertise like, like our town planner. Is there any discussion on that issue?
Clark, I'd just like to have a clarification. Your central point is that at some moment, if we have a large number of conditions, we would be better to resolve them before we close the hearing and go into final deliberations. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that there's, the applicants identified a dozen issues that are, you know, make this a condition of approval, a hedge, you know, signage, paving, homeowner, commercial homeowners association, language, hours of, you know, use, you know, exterior lighting, all these things that would typically, we would typically see as a special permit. Or would have it have brought up over and over. We're kicking the can down the road. So I, I, I think the question is, how many is, is too many? And isn't there some risk on the part of the applicant that they just can't satisfy some, some, a majority of a board, a month or two or three months from now on a particular item?
All right. So that's a statement of fact. Can you, is there any member of the planning board that would like to speak to this? Tommy, Tom Callahan?
I'm assuming that's directed at the fact that I've written something with 95 conditions.
Not directly, no, Tom, not directly.
That's right. I don't take it personally.
I thought there were 96, by the way.
Oh, yeah, maybe. I don't take it personally, really. I just, I have written decisions like this before. I have participated as an attorney for a big project like this before. I'm a firm believer in dealing with everything in a very comprehensive and detailed way. And I don't, I put a lot of conditions in because there's a lot of different aspects to a project of this magnitude that's going to last for the next 50 to 100 years and have a significant impact on the town. And I don't want to leave things to chance, number one. And I don't want to leave things to discretion about whether this should be done or that should be done. George, George and Ted may be here to build this project. They may not be. And I want to, I think it needs to be very comprehensive and very detailed. So much of what they, you know, I, you see in my conditions, reference to the letters back, the exchange of letters back in October, they need, they're leaving so much for us to put as a condition. So fine, I'll take the invitation and do that. But you know, I, I've seen a draft of some conditions that were for the project up on 3A, the transportation district project. I don't know if that was the full list of the conditions or not, but it was very short and sweet. And I don't think we benefit from short and sweet. I've never seen any benefit from short and sweet. Because it's going to lead to too many potential issues of dispute in the future. And I think we have to do this project right and we have to do it very thoughtfully and comprehensively.
Tom, I understand exactly what you're saying, but there's two different types. One is you must do this as an applicant. We, we expect you to do X, Y, or Z. But the other is based on the applicant's request to kick the information can down the road. We're not going to give you that information. Just make it a condition. But reviewing and approving of what the supplemental information on an application is later, I think that there, my concern is that there may be too many of that. And I'd like to minimize that part.
I
Just a minute.
Amy, Amy, would all, I'm sorry. This is where Zoom gets to be a pain in the neck. If we were in a live meeting, we'd all be going back and forth and debating this and we need to.
I, I understand that. I just want to make sure it's clear where we are, which is at the beginning of Clark's comments. And I'm wondering whether or not we should let Clark go through his comments and then circle back to this issue.
Well, I mean, we'll be here for multiple nights if we're going to talk about his 16, mine 96, yours.
That's basically the way it's planned.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can cut through and go through the easy ones first.
Well, let's, yeah, let's break it down into categories.
And then if we have two or three from each person that we need to discuss it at more length, then that's fine. I mean, I think my main point, everybody understands it. We can come back to that.
I mean, I would suggest maybe we just break it down into certain discrete topics and see what we all think about a particular topic.
Excuse me, but unfortunately, we really can't do cross correlation of different people's points of view in, in a meeting like this. What we need to do, because of the dysfunctionality of the technology or its limits as a, as a two dimensional space, we can't be looking at things and comparing and figuring out which ones are exactly the same that we only need to address once. That's why I requested that we go through each individual planning board members' comments. And we deal with each one of them. And, and then we move on to the next person. There's no other way for us to get everything said and to allow people to speak their minds.
Well, can I just suggest something as an example, for example? Inclusionary zoning is a discrete topic. Traffic concerns is a discrete topic. The height of the building is a discrete topic. Control of the public spaces. Why not? Like, for example, let's start with inclusionary zoning. What do we all think about that? There's, there's three choices.
Tom, we're doing this a different way. We're
I mean, we don't have a way to keep track. We're going to have to, that's why we are going in the order of individuals' comments. I, I have Eric Potter, Eve Tapper and Lauren Lynn. Eric?
I, I, I understand the limitations of Zoom, but on some issues, I mean, well, a discussion would be a little bit helpful because I think it allows resolution of a matter. Whether, when you're just going down the list in the comments and with no discussion, it, it, it seems to be a kind of, we're going around in circles more than anything else. It just is another set of person talking about their comments and no one's ever really. It just is another set of person talking about their comments and no one's ever really resolving anything. So it's just, I understand that this is probably the most expeditious way to do it, given the limitations, but I think that we're looking for resolutions here and you have to have a discussion in order to resolve some things. Especially if there's two board members that have different points of view. That's really the only way to get to a, a, a decision of some kind, instead of just kind of keep going through the same, you know, mechanics of this.
Yeah.
I, I don't agree and I'm not saying there's going to be no discussion, but the way to keep us on track, to be sure that each person gets the time to describe what they are concerned about, we have to have some form of order. And that is why I'm trying to get us to stay to individual lists, rather than trying to aggregate across lists to have, if, if, if the question of inclusionary zoning comes up in Tom's comments first, or comes up in Clark's comments first, we hopefully will resolve that issue then. And we don't have to discuss it somewhere later in somebody else's comments. But, but there's no way for us to go and aggregate them in a manner that we don't lose something. So that's why we, with Clark, the idea was for him to go through his issues. We discuss his issues. And then if his issue clears up something that was also present for somebody else, then it won't be re-articulated later.
But that, and that the board can reach some kind of um, non-binding consensus on it.
Right, that if you bring up an issue and, and you discuss it, then you be the person who introduces it and you may close the issue. It's, it's really about trying to be somehow systematic. Otherwise, we're gonna lose track of things. So let me ask um, uh, Lauren, no, Eve and then Lauren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that um, the, that Mr. Brewer's um, first comment is a more general comment about the number of conditions. And I just wanted to say, in my experience, uh, there are always, you know, 50 or 60 or 90 conditions and that very often, they do have conditions that say, bring back a signed package for us to look at. And that, that is something that the applicant knows they need to come back and do. And that it, it allows the planning board to make sure that their concerns are included in it. But um, in, in, rather than just say, let's push the issue down to a conclusion, my suggestion would be perhaps in a signed package or in a homeowners association package, you say the planning board would, you know, the, at, at a certain point in time, the applicant has to come back with a draft of the HOA covenant or um, whatever. I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, I keep saying that. Um, but that, but also that you would, the board would be able to say, and it should include that the uh, the homeowners can never close off the park. It always has to be open to the public. And you can list in your conditions, a number of things that you would like to make sure that they, that they put in. So when they bring it back to you, you can double check to make sure that your concerns are addressed. So it's, it's more so that you're getting your, you get your thoughts out in the conditions as to what you would like to see and then it's incumbent upon them to bring it back. But rather than, rather do it this way than to have them to draw it all up or to draw up all of the materials. You can be explicit in your materials, you'd like to see a mix of materials. And then they come back with a plan uh, that meets all what the planning board has suggested that they would like to see. So the num, and I imagine, I, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the applicants, but I imagine that they understand there's a risk involved in that because they do have to come back to you and they have to get approval. But you can make the conditions, you can allow them to come back um, in the, in the condition, but you can also sort of prejudge what you would like to make sure that they have in the plan or in the document that they bring back so that you're, have something to compare it about. So you're not just starting from scratch again. Does that make sense?
Sure.
I, I've, and so I've seen this in a number of different ways. The number of conditions is not the issue. The issue really is to make sure that what the board wants and what the board has discretion on, that you lay that out and let them come back with it before they get building permits, before they get occupancy permits at any, at some time along the way uh, before they have everything they want and they won't, they don't come back at all. So that's how it's, it's worked and you can be explicit in what you'd like to see.
Thank you for that, Lauren Lynn.
Thank you, um, and thank you for everyone who's spoken. I won't reiterate everything that Eve just said, but I just wanted to state um, a, a concept for you to consider for how we proceed tonight. Um, knowing that there's a lot of different comments that have come in from the different members, I have thought that if we could sort of boil down what are our main topics and sticking points tonight, um, and then perhaps even uh, if we sort of work backwards and began with the applicant's conditions that they have proposed and have the members react to those, that way we might boil out some of the individual member items. And then at the next meeting, we could sort of hone down. I think if we have, I see Tom shaking his head, so. Never mind.
I, I liked, I liked everything you were saying, except I, I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think the applicant's conditions are the starting point. The board's conditions need to be the starting point, not the applicant.
All right, um, I'm gonna make an executive decision and we will uh, move forward with Clark Brewer's comments. And please, planning board members, take notes so that you know what the key large topics are so that if what you um, are agreeing to or feeling strongly about, you're keeping track of, because we're not gonna be able to do that for everyone. We have to help do it for ourselves. Karis North, she, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just was uh, going to reinforce what Ms. Tapper said. That with respect to the, the conditions that have to come back to the board, to the extent possible, the board should uh, define what it wants to see coming back. Uh, and I think that the uh, the condo association is one where I've seen similar uh, as an example. You want to see a homeowners condo association documents that preserve the rights of the commercial side with, you know, and balance that with the rights of uh, the um, the residential side. And we can work on some language that, that actually does that. And then it should become a box that's checked that said, yes, this meets the condition. So that it, it, now, that's the best that you can do. There are also obviously some conditions that uh, are gonna relate to the other regulatory boards. And, and those are simply, I, I think the conditions in many instances should, should be, you know, get an approval from the Concom. Um, and you know, you must meet whatever the Concom says with respect to this particular issue or what DEP says with respect to this particular issue. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Um, all right, Clark, would you, so Clark, your key point is um, we wanna have um, conditions, but we don't wanna uh, create a situation in which we stack all of them to be dealt with in the future. We wanna resolve as many as we can and that's the plan.
Well, well, central to the issue is the closing of the public hearing. Do we have enough information? And some of the conditions are ones that would require submittal of specific information that needs to be approved by the planning board. Um, and some of them don't, they're just, they're just conditions of that, that, as, as both Karis and, and Eve have articulated. So I'm happy to move on to number two.
Thank you.
Uh, number two is another condition, I think, that the development, uh, sale or transfer that the owner of record and the principals um, must remain on the project throughout the C of O, except for an unusual circumstance and as approved by the planning board.
Is there any commentary on this of planning board members? Is there a general sentiment from the planning board members that there is an agreement on this um, uh, condition? Can I see a, uh, hands raised with regard to this condition? Tom Callahan?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't raise my hand yet, but uh, I, I, I like it, but I'm just wondering if we can do it. I don't know that we can say to somebody, you can't sell a property if you want to sell the property. And then obviously, the conditions and the permit we issued would be binding on a future owner, but I just don't know if we can restrict uh, sale.
All right, let's ask for a, a comment from Karis North.
You cannot condition the ability of somebody to transfer their, their property.
Okay, let's move on to number three then. Uh, the commercial spaces, we've talked about the homeowner association and the condo association being written in the bylaw, being um, uh, submitted uh, for a review and approval. Um, and I think that the applicant has agreed to, to do that. And what's really important is what Karis outlined is whether there, we know that there's gonna be some conflicts between the commercial uses and the, and the residential uses. We want to the extent the homeowners association and business owners association to resolve those as a part of their bylaw. And we want to see how that resolution works itself out. We want to make sure that the business owners get the encouragement and flexibility that they need while the residential owners uh, preserve their rights for um, you know, being able to live in peace to the extent that's reasonable for a mixed-use project.
All right, let me ask, planning board members, uh, is this a condition that uh, you have a strong sentiment about? Tom Callahan?
Yeah, and this'll get into one of my conditions. I just wanna make clear what I was thinking of writing that. I don't care about the condo documents in the broadest sense. I'm, I'm concerned about three things, that they, they can contain all the agreements and covenants we put in this decision regarding the interaction of the public space and the private space. That they, the permit itself is part of the condo documents. Um, and the third thing is what the topic Clark was just talking about. I don't want the relationship to, between the residential and the commercial owners. And I have seen this where it's so bad and so one-sided that you don't get a commercial own. Nobody would want to come into the project and own a commercial unit because they don't have a fair shape in the condominium. So um, you know, the, the rest of the things about how the condo governs itself and collects fees and all that, no, I don't care about all the general condo stuff. The things that relate to our permit in this project, I absolutely agree need to be put in as conditions.
All right, thank you. Paul Grady?
I'm fine with what Clark said.
Thank you. Eric Potter?
No comment on this.
Um, all right, Paul Collieri?
No comment, Madam Chair.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Uh, the commercial space on the west side of the north building. Um, uh, your most recent plans show stairs accessing that. And um, it's gotta be handicap accessible. Um, so you're gonna have to either lower the floor plan, uh, create a ramp or something like that in order to make that work.
All right, planning board members, Tom Callahan?
Nope, no, no comment.
Uh, Paul Grady?
No comment, I agree.
Eric Potter?
No comment.
Paul Collieri?
No comment.
Next item.
Okay, exterior finishes. Um, the most recent plans noted an eight-inch shingle exposure. Um, I think that um, a six-inch and uh, color and shingle type should be submitted. The copper roofs for minor roofs was in the original plans and, and taken out of the second. Uh, the, the applicant has said they don't plan to use copper roofs anymore. Um, I think the stone finish samples, while they look good in the rendering, it's, I've, there's, there's not good-looking stone veneer. And then there's, there's great-looking stone veneer. And usually, it's a matter of price point. I think we should get samples and be able to approve anything that's in the exterior realm. The, the unit exterior glass balconies, I think, is a problem for privacy. And I think that uh, 50 to 80% um, um, opaque, opaqueness is appropriate as opposed to the 100% uh, transparency. Window and door manufacturers and coastal compliance, I think that's a safety issue. Um, and I, I think they should be submitted. Trim color types um, and details at this point, um, you know, can be approved as a part of the final revised site plan. Any critical exterior element um, uh, where we don't actually see it or we see something that um, that, that begs for um, a question about uh, quality and um, uh, the longevity of the construction, uh, the robustness of it uh, for storms, et cetera. I think that those types of um, exterior finishes should be submitted for approval with uh, reasonable justification for how they're gonna perform.
All right, so I wanna just clarify the last point that you made. You basically are saying that you want to have a climate, um, you wanna have materials that are uh, capable of withstanding the current climate and the future climate of the area. And we can frame a, a language to produce that.
So no, no, I just wanna see uh, for the future condo owners that the exterior materials are as robust as, as is reasonable. And I wanna know what they are. Uh, because unfortunately, they're shown generic and in some cases, what was originally proposed has been taken out. I think that what was the copper roof should be put back in.
All right, uh, so that's important to have that detail. Tom, so let me ask, planning board members, Tom Callahan, do you have a comment?
I defer to our architectural expert.
Thank you. Paul Grady?
I second Tom in deferring to Clark.
Eric Potter?
I think Clark's request is reasonable in, in most of the exterior cases.
Uh, okay, Paul Collieri?
Thank you. Um, I'm just curious, does anyone know if we have um, like a hurricane-grade requirement for properties built on the water in terms of windows and such? Does anyone know the answer to that quickly?
Um, I have in my conditions comments about this, Paul, so why don't we take it up later? All right, cause I have a little bit more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for putting it up. Okay, so um, I'm going to take there an approval then to that item. Let's move on.
Okay, signage, exterior signage. Basically, the concern on, on signage is it establishes policy like um, where the, where the walkway, is it closed after dusk? Um, is it dawn to dusk? Is it 24 hours? Is, you know, there are signs, no skateboarding? What, what are the, what are the limits to the public space? Um, and then uh, signage can be a, a real um, benefit to people understanding what's back there, how to get to it, who, who is entitled to it? Um, in addition to uh, kind of establishing an overall kind of theme for a project. The, the applicant has said that they, they will submit signage down the road.
But you're qualifying signage in terms of what the signage is related to.
What it does.
That's right.
It's not just an obligation, it's a part of the policy that's expressed to the public and, and the users of the project.
All right, so I would say that what you've written is not uh, as specific as what you just said and we will take it out of the tape. Uh, let me ask the, the planning board members, Tom Callahan?
I, I don't, I don't have any specific comment on it, you know, as far as the hours of usage in the public space. I did address that in my conditions as a, you know, as a reasonable accommodation to the private owner. And yeah, there, there should be signage that explains everything.
Okay, so we'll take up the hours open um, when we get to your comments. Eve Tapper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I am not sure if the board has decided this, or maybe they have, as to who is going to. So I'm taking notes and I'm sure everybody is taking notes on this, but as to who is actually gonna be um, putting together the conditions that are agreed to today, you know, for the next meeting. Um, and if it's staff, I had a question uh, for, with, with Mr. Brewer's um, issue on the exterior finishes. Again, um, the, 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 one of the conditions that should definitely be there is that the project has to be built as shown on all of the plans and all the architectural plans. And they, is there not enough specificity um, in their architectural plans to uh, for, for you, for you, and, and not, not necessarily in materials, but they have to make it look like that and it always has to look like that or that, that's a change. So asking them to provide all the materials now, um, it, it, it is something that you could do, but they may not have decided, but they've got a general idea and then they're going to plan and that, and in order to move forward, they have to make sure that what they are building on site looks like those plans or they have to come back. and in order to move forward, they have to make sure that what they are building on site looks like those plans, or they have to come back to the planning board. So I was trying to figure out whether or not you want to see all of these finishes beforehand and then lock them in, or whether you, whether a condition that just says it must look like the plan submitted on X date that the architect provided, and then
Well, I think the key, I think the key, I understand your point. I think the key component is, is the, you know, the we need to approve of what the exterior finishes are, and where they're shown generically. We need to know what they are and then approve them. We can, we can make it a condition of site plan approval to get those. But then we're going to have to understand that, you know, like coastal windows need to, that the windows have muttons that are, that are through muttons, it's a part of the quality and the robustness of the project that will be, be there when the, when the developer is long gone, and there's just a bunch of people living there.
Yeah, so I understand that point, and again, it has to, if they've shown muttons, they have to show them, they have to actually put them on the, on the, on the building. And it has to look like that, and I would imagine it would behoove them to, you know, build something that would, would last going forward. And that anyone who moves in, if, if they, as part of the condo docs, as we discussed earlier, would have the conditions listed and a copy of this, of this, of this decision, so they would know it would have to always look like that. They couldn't make changes. And I, so I didn't know, I wasn't exact, I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea, and maybe I'm not going to have to write the condition or the draft condition as we go forward, and someone else will, but I was trying to figure out how to write that kind of a condition. Do you, that you, do you want to see everything beforehand, or you just want it to look like it, it shows in the, and it has to be sturdy?
What's shown, what's shown is generic, and there's no manufacturers of windows and doors called out. There's no window types, it's just shown like there's, there's a grill there.
Right, and I, and I, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if we can legally require them to use certain manufacturers.
I think they need to propose what they want to use with the details of the specific products. That's, that's really, as opposed to showing it generic and saying, oh, it more or less looks like what they said they were going to build, but there's performance issues down the road.
All right, let me ask Karis.
I'm not, I don't know the legal answer to that question. The other, can I just ask one other point? There's also that you've asked for a change to the glass, the exterior of the glass balconies and the, the copper roofs. I mean, that's something that the applicant has to decide whether or not they are, want to put back into the project, because they have presented sort of their, as I think they mentioned today, sort of their last, final and last plan of what they would like to move forward with. So I don't know if you can require them if that's not part of their application.
Well, they were in.
It's a legal question.
They were in, and then they were out, and I don't think, you know, as the architect, I noticed it. And so I feel like that there's, unless there's a good reason to take out an element of quality, then they should be left in. And, and frankly, if nobody other than I noticed it, then that's okay. You know, I can justify my existence, but.
All right, let me ask Karis Norris, and then I'm going to take a poll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant has to propose the specifics, the, the board should not be proposing the specifics and, and sort of getting down to the detail of copper roofs or not. I don't really think that's, I, I have to look at the, I would have to actually go back and look at the design guidelines and see if these are consistent with the design guidelines. So that's, you know, it's certainly a kind of a condition that is from time to time required. My other comment was with respect to the, the policy issues that, that Mr. Brewer mentioned. Some of those will be addressed, and many of them will be addressed in the chapter 91 licensing process. So I think one potential way to deal with that is again, to make sure that, you know, the signage and the policy that comes out of those signs is consistent with the chapter 91 and other regulatory approvals. And we'll take a look at those draft conditions and make sure everybody has them, so they understand what is covered in that process.
So with that comment, Karis, that we're halfway here, so what do we do with what you just said? I mean, if what we're trying to do is propose conditions, and now we've got to wait for a chapter 91 resolution of some sort, some mechanism to build it into this discussion, how does that work?
But you, your, your language in your decision is, you know, signage related to hours of operation has to be consistent with the chapter 91 license. Because that is an element of the chapter 91 license, and I think it would be helpful, and I'll make sure and ask Ms. Lynn to circulate those sort of example, chapter 91 license conditions that were submitted in November, so that everyone understands what type of conditions, what, you know, what is covered by standard chapter 91 license conditions.
All right, so that does present a bit of a problem, in my view, because it means that we are discussing things which could end up being readdressed in, in comparisons to the 91 conditions. Is that right?
No, because you have to defer to the, the 91 process, right?
So I, I understand that, but, but the issue is, from the standpoint of planning board members, we're anticipating going through these lists with some expectation that, that they will be active and they will be relevant. And you're suggesting that there's a superseding by 91 that's going to potentially eliminate that some of the things that we are considering, and it's, it's going to be difficult to sort that out.
Well, it shouldn't be that difficult when we have the, the list of standard conditions and the, the language should be simply the, the signage, you know, regarding hours of, of hours of access to the public space has to be consistent with the chapter 91 license. And then the chapter 91 license will be issued, and when you review the signs, you'll be able to see whether it's consistent with that license or not. And that's a standard type of condition.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not challenging you at all. I'm trying to think about sequentially, wouldn't we just start up at the top and say that all of the items that we are here discussing tonight must be subjected to and reviewed under the responsible responsibility of chapter 91, and that serves as a, as a conditioning statement overall. And then we are making determinations, but we acknowledge that those determinations may not actually hold sway because they don't abide by the 91 conditions. Wouldn't we just?
The way this, the way this can work is, the way this works is, we set our conditions that there's conflicts with regulatory agencies outside of the planning board decision, and then they just come, the applicant comes back for a modification and explains why there was a conflict. And we, and we deal with this on, on issues out on 3A where we as a planning board, we, we have certain safety things for, for projects that we, we incorporate into our final decisions, knowing full well that Mass Mass Highway
Right.
is gonna, they're going to do their own review and their own thing. So it's, it's the applicant that has to say, okay, that's what they wanted, and then this is what we got from Mass Highway. So then they come back for a modification and explain, and that's, and that's, that's, that's a normal part of our business.
Okay, so that's fine, for everybody on the board, some people know that, some people don't. Now people know that. So I want to go, I want to move on. And so
Lighting.
What?
Number seven is lighting.
All right.
And I've just said all, all exterior and interior public space lighting fixtures should be located on a plan, and we should have mass manufacturers cut sheets, performance and aesthetics. And sometimes the light bulb type makes a big difference in a certain location. While the applicant has said we'll submit those, I just think it's going to be important as a condition to, that the performance and aesthetics are critical, especially on the waterfront where, you know, a tiny little light bulb that's, that's five watts can have a big impact on, on boaters and, and and if somebody throws a hundred watt LED in there, it can be brutal for the neighbors. So, but the applicants agreed to do this.
All right, thank you. Let me ask board members, Tom Callahan, do you agree?
Yep.
Paul Grady.
I agree.
Eric Potter.
I agree.
Paul Collieri.
Agree.
Thank you, let's move on.
Eight, rooftop HVAC unit sound performance. The applicants agreed to provide sound performance for the, for the review of the planning board down the road. Now, what they've done in terms of design is they've designed these wells inside the roof, which will baffle the sound well. It will do a good job as opposed to having them be on top of a flat roof, and then the sound being able to go in all directions. So I think what they've got set up probably will work reasonably well, provided we can confirm that this equipment operates very quietly and efficiently.
All right, let me get a vote from the board, Tom Callahan.
I'm good with it.
Paul Grady.
I'm fine with that.
Agreed.
Paul Collieri.
Agreed.
Let's move on.
Number nine, flood protection. I think pumps, gates, and any other protection, especially for the garage area, details should be submitted for a review and approval. And I don't, I think Amy might have touched on some of this in her preamble, but I think whatever the flood protection is, we haven't seen any, anything special to deal with it yet.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan. Paul Grady. Eric Potter. Paul Collieri.
I, I believe that the chapter 91 licensing will supersede any of our conditions, and they'll put the appropriate conditions in place, and we'll agree to that then. But yeah, I'm, I'm in agreeance with that, of course, it's, it's going to be either with us or with them.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter. What do I do when somebody leaves? I'll come back and ask.
Let's move on.
I, I'm going to come back to him later. Number 10.
Number 10, inclusionary zoning units, three units should be provided onsite unless the planning board wants to vote for onsite units for three or more, and that these must be approvable by DHCD and the, and the planning board in the future, since they're not being proposed, nothing specific is being proposed yet.
All right, so this is one of the big topics, and my recommendation would be that we set this aside, we go through everyone, and this becomes one that we circle back.
Okay. Eleven, view easement corridor, no trees or kiosks to be located to the north of the south edge of Elm Street. That's that, the whole area of the building, all the way to Margin Street should not have any structures or, or screening, vegetated screening elements.
All right, I'm going to ask Paul Collieri.
Sorry, you caught me off guard doing out of turn. I agree, I agree, 100%.
Okay, Paul Grady.
I'm with it.
Tom Callahan, have you walked off? Are you still there?
Let's just move on.
We're going to move on, I'll come back.
Okay, we have had the problem, you know, especially out on 3A with the Cedarmere project, where the site was left a mess and the developer disappeared for years. So for Cole Brothers, we had a bond for site cleanup. And on the offhand chance that the project gets sold or something unforeseeable happens, and the site is a mess, it seems like there should be a bonded amount for cleaning up the site to some extent.
Karis North, your comments to us suggested something about our ability to require a bond. Could you please speak to this?
Yeah, so in, there were other conditions that talked about bonding that were broader. I think a reasonable bonding requirement for something like site cleanup or even related to the, the public space. I don't think that you can really require a bond for, you know, to cover the, the value of the construction of the, the, the private space.
Not to complete the project, but
Correct.
make the, the site safe should circumstances require it.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
Are you finished, Karis?
Yep, I am. Bond form to be approved, you know, by council, but yes.
Tom Callahan.
I, Karis and I are in agreement on this. I, I think we need a bond for a project of this magnitude. It should cover any type of public space, the public park, the parking lot, the sidewalks, curbing, the same kind of things you would deal with in a subdivision, the public infrastructure. And then also, as Clark says, you know, securing the site. If we had a half finished buildings that would be an attractive nuisance, I think we should have the means to at least secure them so nobody can get into them, or they don't get exposed to weather that kind of thing. I agree that we can't bond the entire value of the project. Something reasonable, but something certainly is necessary, I think, for something of this scale.
All right, thank you. Paul Grady.
Paul agreeing for a bond, this isn't, is encompassing as can reasonably be imposed.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter.
I agree with Paul and Clark.
Paul Collieri.
Agreed.
All right, let's move on. 13.
Okay, paving, all paved surfaces should be detailed with a specific paving. Now, I think the, the applicant has said that they, they want to go through the chapter 91 license in order to resolve that, but I think they need to come back to us to, to say what's being paved over, what's, what's granite, what's cobblestone, what's a, what's a tripping hazard, and, and what needs to be fixed as a part of the project.
All right, Tom Callahan. Paul Grady.
In the, in the conditions I wrote, I specified a lot of places, bricks or permeable, but yet ADA compliant. And I don't, I don't claim to be an expert on this, but we are near the harbor and, you know, putting on my old Tom Tom hat, we would be looking for permeable materials there. So I'm just throwing that out for discussion to put something that is both ADA compliant, but not an absolutely hard surface, you know, more of a permeable surface, like a brick or a paper. And again, I don't know if those can be done safely and be ADA compliant, so I leave that open for discussion, but that's my objective.
All right, I'm going to move this issue because I think it's going to come up several times. So you've raised some issues, and we'll, we'll come back to this, we'll leave this one for now. Let's go to 14, parking.
Parking, I, I recommended that off locus town property in the street modifications that the prop, that the applicant could look at those. And my understanding from his letter is that they are offering to be involved with the design process of the Elm Street corridor, but where it extends in, where the parking potential extends in the public realm and wraps around their property, I would think it would make sense for them to look for the opportunities concurrently with the Elm Street redesign.
All right, we're going to come back to this because this is going to be a topic that's addressed in several places, but thanks for the introduction. Parking garage.
Parking garage, I couldn't tell what the parking structure is. It's a separate use under the building code, and I couldn't tell what's open and what's not open. My understanding for an open parking structure is it's got to be like 50% open. And it definitely has an impact on the costs to the developer. So I can't tell from the, from the elevations, what's open and what isn't open. If it's just the doorways that are open, or whether the doorway is closed down during the winter, I, I can't tell. So I'd like to know what that is. What is the parking garage? What's open? What isn't? What, what gets a roll down door? What doesn't?
All right, parking is going to come up again, but I will take this on forward. Tom Callahan.
I have, I have nothing to add to Clark's.
Paul Grady.
Yeah, I agree with him.
Eric Potter.
I had nothing more to add on that.
Paul Colery.
I I agree.
Okay, number 16.
Last one. Garage openings. There was one, I think, double door and it seems like providing a minimum of 20 20 foot openings for all these garage parking entrances would be reasonable.
I'm not sure what to do with that. What do you, what you are recommending?
I'm recommending a condition.
A specific, but a specific type of of material, a specific
No. The width of the garage openings.
Yep.
That's on the south side of the south building and in between the buildings. And then on the on the western building, just make sure that to confirm that they're at least 20 feet wide because in some cases it looks like they're a little bit smaller. In one case, there's a double door that I I think is going to be problematic.
Okay, thank you. Tom Callahan.
I have nothing to add to that.
Paul Grady.
Agree with it.
Eric Potter.
Nothing to add.
Paul Colery.
Agreed.
Okay, so I just want to give you a time check, ladies and gentlemen. We've been talking about this first set of 16 conditions and it took us approximately 46 minutes. All right.
Have more. You've got like 96 and
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's why we're going to try to, what I think is going to happen at this point is when we go through Toms, I'm going to keep checks of things which have references to what I've talked about. And 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 I will cross off the list of my items if Tom sufficiently details what it is. My concern was in other instances, it's probably going to be the opposite. So let's move on and bring up Toms.
And I've been doing the same and hopefully I won't be feeding anything in the topics.
All right, so we have three topics that we want to return back to. Paving, inclusionary zoning units, and aspects of parking. I'm not going to be any more specific than that.
I'm not going to discuss the background and finding sections.
Correct.
So just going into the conditions, I'll just go by the broader categories first. The general conditions were something that Lauren provided to me from, and you can even see from the date that I didn't catch. Those came from the TOD project on 3A and I just adapted them for this. And a lot of that addresses that you're subject to the plans that you submitted, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that Eve mentioned before. On the building size, configuration, and location, you know, based on what I've heard tonight about the height, I'll be I'll be fine with it. With respect to condition 10, I'm going to defer to Clark on architectural issues.
Can you, can you wait a minute? I need to be able to get people to, are you just describing or are you putting forward?
I'm describing and when I, when I, when I need a decision point, I'll suggest that there's a decision point. I'll just kind of first first get to where I was coming from with it. But, you know, the rest of this Roman numeral two section, trying to adopt and hold them to what's shown on the plans and in the submissions they've given us, what's in the bylaw in certain places, and a lot of this refers to conditions that Weston and Sampson suggested in October. And their response in large part was make it a condition. Okay, so making it a condition. As far as condition 17 about the sizes of the units, discussed this the other day with Karis, I'm not trying to deviate from what the bylaw says, but I am trying to hold them to what the plans say. When the plans had the largest unit was 25, 2458 square feet and 0.73 FAR. I don't want to get into a situation where, and this topic will come up a little later. There was a concern that the first new project that was done under the new village zoning was had exceeded its FARs that were allowed. I don't want to get into that situation. So I want them to stick to what they're proposing. And that's why that limit is in there. It's their number, not mine. But I don't want to have a loosey goosey, oh, it won't exceed 3,000 square feet or something. I'd rather hold them to the specific numbers that they're proposing. With respect to condition 18, I mentioned that a little earlier with Ted about the boundary between 87 and 85 and we, you know, we can discuss that. If I understood the plans correctly, also in that area is a handicap ramp. And I am suggesting that be moved somewhere else, but again, that depends on what we put in that buffer area between 87 and 85. With respect to, I'm sorry, that was condition 19. I'm sorry. Condition 18 was in Weston and Sampson's letter. And again, because we haven't discussed 87 to the extent we have 124, Weston and Sampson mentioned that there was no street trees and plantings. And, you know, the building at 87 is going to be right up against the sidewalk. I think we should adopt what Weston and Sampson is suggesting and see a future submission of some some street trees and planting. So that's one, this condition 18, I'd like to see what the board thinks about that.
All right, let me ask. Paul Grady.
I have no questions there.
Eric Potter.
No questions.
Clark Brewer.
Well, he's saying, can you change the footprint or push it back? And so I, that's what I understand, if it's possible to do that, but it's not an absolute requirement, right? So I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I just, Weston and Sampson suggested it because I think it's part of the bylaw.
It's a recommendation, but not a requirement. So I'm okay with it.
I anticipate that moving the building back too much then runs into setback issues with the marsh behind it, so.
This is number, this is your number 18, right?
My number 18, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if 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 people are okay with not having street plantings there, you know, that's the majority sentiment fine. But that's, that's one that Weston and Sampson pretty much asked us to make a decision on, so.
All right, I'm not done calling the the rules. Paul Colery.
I I'm fine with leaving it where it's proposed.
Okay, and Eric Potter.
I'm fine with leaving it where it's proposed as well.
All right, that sounds like that's the decision. Let's move to 19 then.
The decision is as a recommendation rather than a requirement.
That's what it sounded like from Clark. Let me clarify it. Paul Grady, are you agreeing with what Tom Callahan is requesting or are you agreeing with what Clark has said?
Well, sure, I'd like to see some small trees on the sidewalk or something like that just to offset it. But I'm not looking to make things difficult for the developer.
All right.
That's the difference between a requirement and a recommendation. It's sort of like
I recommend, yeah, I follow Clark's. I recommend it.
There's may and shall, right?
May and shall. Thank you.
All right, so that is going to be modified to reflect that. Move to number 19, please.
All right, in under Roman numeral three, I'm agreeing with the amount of commercial space they're proposing. I I don't agree with all the amenity space, as you can see. I'm not as negative for the prospects of commercial use down there. And I think the amenities space is kind of a cop out of meeting the commercial requirement. You know, we have to remember that the underlying zoning for waterfront business wouldn't have any residential at all. This is still a substantially residential development for the first time in the site's history, as far as I know, going back. And I think we should stick to having all the commercial space that we possibly can, recognizing that it's not a great percentage. To the extent that I dictated particular commercial uses in each space, my only thought about that was to make them viable, not to, it's been suggested to me that, you know, the bylaw allows all kinds of permitted uses and I can't restrict those and that's fine. I understand that. I just, I want everybody to understand that where I was coming from is just to try to dictate the right kind of spaces and the right, you know, the right uses in the right spaces. But I'm sure George's group will figure that out as they go through tenants and owners. The only thing that requires a decision here for a condition would be to redesignate the amenities space in the west building as a commercial space, which would be condition 25A.
All right, let me ask then, Paul Grady.
I don't have any.
What happened to 19, what happened to 19 through 24?
Hold on, Clark. I thought we were on 19. So we went off on a tangent, so I completely lost my, the thread here.
All right, I, as I said, I'm trying to, because of the length of it and in the interest of time, I'm going through the broad categories.
Don't worry about time. It's not, it's better to go in that order because it will get confusing.
All right, well, going back through 19 through 24, again, it's, all of those are incorporating Weston and Sampson requirements in their letter.
So is it, is it a requirement or a recommendation? Number 19.
I'll, I'll, let me see, let me see if I can quickly pick out the
We have already
Right, so 6.4 the street, the street trees in front of 87 was recommended. And then the response was that the applicant proposes a plant new tree at the corner. Meaning electrical transformers was please, please depict planned screening from the street and nearby side. So I took that as, yes, you should do that.
Again, we have to go through these one at a time, right?
Right, so, so let's go back up to 19. We're going to vote at each one of these individually. So the point of 19, please specify it clearly, Tom.
The point of 19 was to leave the mature trees between 87 and 85 Elm Street.
All right, and I want to remind people that the applicant indicated that the neighbor that is adjacent, I believe I am speaking of the same property, Mr. Lubitz? Am I speaking about the same property? They request that those materials be removed and they would supplement it with something which was more appropriate, probably arborvitae or something which is not a rag elm, as an example. So can you accept that that there would be an adjustment to the actual vegetation, but that the green space still be provided?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so then we need to change that, number 19. Okay, let me take a vote. Paul Grady.
I'm fine with that.
Clark Brewer.
It's okay if it's a recommendation and not a requirement.
All right, Eric Potter.
Agree with Clark.
Paul Colery.
I agree.
All right, let's move to 20. The requirement of screening of electrical transformers. Let's, Paul.
I, I take that as Weston and Sampson is requiring.
I agree.
Just hang on, folks. Eve Tapper.
I, 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 I understand, Tom, that 19 through 24 are things that Weston and Sampson asked for. I think maybe you want to just ask the applicant if they're willing to abide by everything in that letter and then you're done, assuming that. I mean, I think that's what you were trying to do.
Yeah, that would, that would certainly, that would certainly cut through this.
If they're willing to make those particular changes based on what Weston and Sampson has required then or has suggested, then you can, you just make them change it on the plans and then they don't, you don't even need them as conditions.
Yeah, I mean, for example, 5.7 about the ADA signage for parking spaces, they say make it a condition of approval. So I'm assuming the applicant agrees with it, but if George wants, Ted wants to confirm that, that's fine.
So rather than making them have to try to make this decision about four or five items right now, why don't we come back to this to make sure that the applicant has enough time to sort through them and decide whether or not they want to accept them in toto. All right. Okay, so that takes us down to where?
Section 3, commercial, non residential.
It takes us to Roman numeral three.
All right.
With respect to 25A, I am suggesting that we change the designation of the amenities space in the west building to a commercial space and that it be used as a commercial space.
All right, let's have some discussion about this.
Without restriction, without any restrictions on what type of commercial space. So the part where I say which shall also be used is blah, 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 take that out.
All right, so, so do I have the license to ask the applicant what the actual meaning is of amenities space? Because one of my conditions is a table of definitions and and I want to be specific that I understand what the difference is between commercial and amenities space or whether they are used in some sort of synonymous way. Am I allowed?
Yeah, I think you are.
Karis, am I allowed to do that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McGoldrick or one of your team?
The amenities space on the west building is going to be a combination of mailroom, places that post office and Amazon trucks can leave for the tenants, for the owners. It's anticipated that there'll probably be some kind of gym or some kind of activity for the owners. We need to have space outside of the units in order to attract people to buy these units. So it's a, there's not a whole lot of space that we're providing for amenities, but we can't give up this small amount of space that we've already designated for it.
All right, let's hear from the board members, please. Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. Tom Callahan.
My, my answer to that and thinking about that is that, you know, when we think of mixed use, traditionally you think of a mix of commercial and residential. I'm okay with the amenities space in the south building with the water view. And I'm suggesting that perhaps that's large enough to serve 23 units. This project is less, if I saw my notes earlier tonight, it's less than 15% commercial. I really think we need to give affinity to what mixed use is. And, you know, recognizing that we're allowing a majority residential development where there is none. We maximize the commercial space that we can and I don't, you know, amenities space isn't defined in the bylaw. The bylaw says non residential space. It doesn't, so. I, I just think it's just a little, playing a little fast and loose with the definition. And I mean, no slam on George and Ted. You made presentations that was sort of negative on the idea that commercial can be successful down here. I'm not that negative about it. I look, you know, as my decision says, I look at Situate Harbor as more of an example than Marina Bay. And, and I think, you know, this is something where, you know, I heard the condition that we don't reduce the amount of commercial space, but if the condition was in the future, you know, if they come in for a modification to turn this into an amenities space or some other non residential space, I would be amenable to that if their projections that commercial isn't going to work very well prove to be true. But for now, I think we should be maximizing the commercial use because I think that's far more critical to vibrancy than a gym for the members or a mailroom, with all due respect. I still am okay with conceding the amenities space in the other building. Just don't want to see it used, overused as a cop out to providing commercial space. That's, and that's where I'm coming from. So I'm open to suggestions.
All right, Mr. McGoldrick.
There is commercial space right next to where you're There is commercial space right next to where you're talking about.
I understand.
There's about a thousand square feet of commercial space right there, which, which could hold two to three different types of tenancy there. We didn't just arbitrarily say that we don't want a commercial space. Don't forget, the commercial space is there, we'll either get rent or someone buying it. The amenity space is there, we get zero, so it's not an economic decision. We're not doing it there because we actually lose money by the amenity space, but you have to have space there available in this kind of project. It's a very tight project all over. We've given so much of the space. We've given so much of the space to the public already. And we need to have space available for mailrooms and other amenities for the, for the tenants. To say that it is non-residential space, but we went further and clarified exactly what it was. So I'm a little bit offended that you're mad that we called it what it is, as opposed to saying it's non-residential, come back later on. We need to have some space for mailroom, we need to have some space to lure people to this. This is a, this is a risky project. It's lost in all this two years is that there's a significant amount of risk that we're taking to do this project. And we have, we've not made a decision on commercial space in a tunnel. We've talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we've talked to tenants downtown, we've talked to the guy that brokers every piece of retail space in this town. And he shook his head and said, you're crazy to think you can get anybody down there. This is not made in a vacuum. We've spent a lot of time looking at it and you can't compare us to downtown Situate. Because yes, if you had four or five streets of activity, that brings people down there. We have an acre of land that we're talking about, we're talking about two buildings. We can't, we can't create downtown Situate in two buildings.
So I recommend, this is a long enough conversation and there are details that we might negotiate around to leave this and come back to it once we get through the other elements of a list.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say in my defense, I'm not trying to be overly negative here about things, I'm just. The, the project is supposed to be a mixed use project. I just want to make sure we get the right mix and have this dialogue, which we have not been able to have before tonight. I'm just trying to throw things out for discussion here and not necessarily say this. Here, it's a suggestion at this point, it's one, one member's suggestion at this point.
All right, so I have a remedy for that and we will come back to it.
All right.
Just a quick comment, I agree with Tom on this one. I recommend that this be commercial space with the applicant coming in and making it amenity down the road if he has to. One storefront in an entire building, you know, doesn't really help create the, the village, the robust village feeling in this area that I think the purpose section of the bylaw requires. While I understand and I'm sympathetic to, to what his experts have said, that I think that there are, there are commercial people that would go into that space and he could carve out a bit of it for, for a mailroom and could probably do a shared gym with the building across the street. But I'm just saying, I agree with Tom, there's not enough commercial space in the project as, as it was originally anticipated.
All right, so let's, let's leave this for now because Mr. Okay, you want to speak? That's fine, Clark, or Eric?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know why, this seems like we're talking like kicking the can down. This seems to be a pretty important issue here, but why don't we just discuss it? I mean, it's on the table right now.
It, it's fine with me, I, we were just trying to get the ones we could agree to through and then come back to ones that have larger implications. But if you'd like to discuss this one now, that's fine with me.
I mean, I just feel, I mean, my, I, I, there's an inherent problem here because I tend to, I mean, my personal opinion is I, I agree with George. It is George's assessment, I mean, it, it, it doesn't line up with, with the bylaw that was passed necessarily. So there's an inherent problem there because Tom bringing this is a good point, it is supposed to be a multi-use project. But George is also, I think, a hundred percent on, on point with what he's saying about, you know, putting commercial, you know, more commercial space down there than that's really going to be used and, and them giving up the, you know, the open space as, as, as a return. And it, it's just been skirted around really deep, you know, diving into the specifics of this and, and how we're going to, how it's going to be dealt with. And I think it's probably the biggest issue outstanding of them all.
So Eric, can you clarify the, the connection between the open space and this discussion? I didn't hear it come in with this.
What I, I think that the giveback is, is, I think that, in my, you know, the way I see this as, is, you know, this is, it, 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 the open space that's being given back to the public is basically, you know, we're, the commercial space on the ground floor of the units, it, it, that would be required under the bylaw just isn't really viable and, and for this project. So, you know, as a, a way to kind of make this all work and make everyone happy so that the project works and so that there can be that vibrancy that's, we're all looking for. It is to have this be, you know, instead of, in lieu of the brick and mortar commercial space that you would have that is, is, is written into the bylaw, you're, you're having this, the, the, the open space kind of as, as, as a way to get people down there in a way brick and mortar commercial spaces otherwise used to do it. So, you know, but there's a, there's an inherent conflict there that Tom raises and, and, you know, where does the board sit with, with regards to that? I mean, I kind of, I personally think that, you know, I can see that, you know, the amenity space is, is like George said, it's not a, you know, something that is, is needed for his at the, at the West, the West site. And I, I mean, I would like to see more commercial brick and mortar space, but is it something that is, you know, is that a flaw that's in the bylaw itself? That it, it really isn't going to, additional commercial space really isn't going to benefit anyone?
All right, Tom Callahan, then I'm going to ask Paul Grady to add some commentary.
I, I, again, I want to be clear, you know, overall where I was coming from in this. To go back to my draft findings, I, I don't accept the premise that the open space is a complete apples to apples comparison with the commercial space. The bylaws, I understand it is designed to have brought the building forward towards the sidewalk so that we have open space and to create a vibrancy that includes three elements, open space, commercial and residential. So I don't see the open space as a substitute for commercial space and it's something that is necessary. I don't want to use the word gift, but I've heard the word gift being used. All I, I, to, to focus this down, I, I, I'm okay with the fact that this project is fifteen percent or less commercial. I've come, I, I understand what George is saying about the economics, you know, I, I shouldn't make decisions simply because of the COVID situation, but yes, retail has been struggling before COVID came along, I get that. I do think you can have multiple restaurants in the harbor and the village and they could survive. And all I, I want to focus is I'm just talking about eliminating or, or reducing the size of what is identified as amenity space in the West Building. The rest of what they propose is fine with me. And the trade-off between open space and commercial and residential and the percentages that each is, that's fine with me. I just would like to see, I, I think the amenity space is just leaving things out there loosey-goosey and it's not serving the purposes of the bylaw. It's not serving you, George, economically, I get that, but it's not serving, I think, the purpose of the bylaw. So that's all I'm suggesting is let's focus on the space in the West Building. Should it be all amenity? Should be a smaller amenity, more commercial? I, I, I think I'd rather see us go positively and to see what could be developed there commercially and then come back later for a modification than to foreclose that space to commercial use. That's all I'm suggesting.
All right, thank you, Clark Brewer?
No, I think Paul Grady, I, I made my comment on it.
All right, Karis North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, to mention, there's obviously a lot of discussion of commercial space, but when you, when you look at the purpose of the bylaw, you look at A and B, they do talk about public access and access to the harbor as well. And then when you go down and look at the, the, the allowed uses, there is, you know, it's not just commercial space, it does include other kinds of spaces. I'm not saying that necessarily that the amenity space falls within here, but, but there is sort of civic culture and community facilities, I think, in, at some level, some of the outdoor space may potentially fall there. So I just, I, I just want to make sure you're looking at all of the elements. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, are we ready to decide on this one or would we like to think about it more and come back?
Not that everyone.
I, I would suggest the applicant take into account what we've heard tonight and maybe come back with another idea or tell us, you know, we're going to stand pat what we really are.
All right, let me ask folks if that's how they feel, Paul Grady?
Well, my point, I'm for working within the frame, framework of the bylaw. And if you want to revisit the situation, then we can revisit it, but I am for sticking within the law.
All right, so I will take that, that will be your position throughout this discussion, correct?
Any further discussion?
All right, thank you. Okay, Eric Potter?
I'm okay with talking with it, about it down the road now that we've kind of had a little bit more discussion about it. My opinion is, is what Karis pointed out that there, it's not just commercial space. That's why my opinion has always been the open space is a little bit of a giveback with brick and mortar commercial space. So I'm okay with the way things are, but I see the conflict that, that Tom raises and I guess it does mean that we'll have to discuss it further.
Great, thank you, Eric. Clark Brewer?
Well, George has admitted that that amenity space doesn't generate any income. But I think to Tom's point, maybe, maybe the space could be halved and there could be some commercial space there. It could be, it could be a split.
All right, so what we have on the table now is to return to this requesting that the applicant think about this discussion and then, and potentially come back to us, but let me just go to Paul Colery.
I, I think the applicant and the development team have done extensive amount of research and I think what they put forward to us is what would be and will continue to be for decades to come, the most successful proposal that the waterfront has seen. And so as George and Clark just reiterated, there's no added value. Like this is something that needs to be present in a condominium development of this scale and of this space and, and in a location such as this. Like these are the amenities that these buyers want. And so the developer has to provide them. And so all the research has been done and I think what they put together is literally the best thing that could happen to the waterfront. So if, if the discussion continues, you know, I, I think they've done a great job presenting what needs to be there.
All right, I'm going to close this part of the discussion and we'll come back to this item. Let's move on, Tom, are we going to twenty-six?
I, I'll lump twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight together, we talked about these earlier, these would be, you know, the conditions that we put into the condo documents to just ensure the governance, you know, the relationship between the commercial and the business of residential units. I don't think we had any disagreement about that, it's just a question of writing the right language, which I'm sure we all would, you know, Karis will have some suggestions for that.
Okay, so let me see if I can summarize what you're saying. That the project will need a condominium or homeowners association organization established, it will need rules, regulations, et cetera, and that this group would like to see at least some kind of a document or some statement about what this would look like, rather than leaving it open-ended. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, like, like I said earlier, not the whole, I don't care about the whole condominium and how it's run and organized. I care about, I care about that the condominium association is bound to this permit in three specific, you know, three specific areas. Relating to the open space, relating to the commercial space and just having the permit in general be part of the condominium.
All right, so I actually, Paul Grady?
I was asking Tom, is that in perpetuity, Tom, is what you're looking at?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I actually think in, in my discussion, I have a set of issues associated with this. So while I, my general conversation is, is in a similar light to what Tom presented, I'd like to put this off and we come back to it when we get to mine comments. So let's move on to open space, number four.
The most important thing about open space, and it goes into the next category of public amenity areas that I guess we're going to still discuss is the public control. We've talked about this, it would be to easement, I think it should be a perpetual easement. I don't think that we need to completely defer to chapter ninety-one, I think we should write what we want to write. But there's no reason our conditions can't be in harmony with what a chapter ninety-one condition would be. The difference I'm suggesting here is chapter ninety-one's duration would be thirty years, we're saying perpetual. I mean, if there's going to be this public space, the public should have control of it. If you look through this section and the next section, I'm perfectly amenable to having some reasonable time limits and activity limits so that we, the public space doesn't become a nuisance to the condominium owners. But at the same time, I don't want to get into a situation down the road where the condominium owners are dictating how the public space should be used. So the overall emphasis here is to have the town have control over that space. And we have some conditions that reasonably accommodate both the private interest and the public interest, with hours of operation, restrictions on certain activities at certain hours, et cetera, et cetera. Rather than vote on some of my conditions here, I'd like to hear back from the applicant about how they think that relationship between the public and the private owner should work. And I'd be willing to enter, you know, this is one of the things I wrote in hopes of sparking a dialogue that we come up with the right language and the right relationship. But I, I certainly disagree that we have to sit here and, and write nothing and defer to chapter ninety-one. I think we should take charge of what we want and there's no reason we can't harmonize it with the chapter ninety-one process. And, and condition thirty-one, I noticed that Weston and Sampson had suggested there was no screening between the public park and, the public park and the private park. So I'm suggesting some things, I even suggested some wild idea of one of those one-way mirror kind of deals, but whatever, I'm again leaving it to the applicant to come up with something creative for screening, but Weston and Sampson had suggested that we have screening between the public space and the private space. So on, on thirty-one, I, I do think the board should take a vote, is that something you would want to see?
I agree, so let me just stop here and take a vote for the desire, but, okay, Mr. McGoldrick?
I can address both of those points if, if you'd like, I'll take the second one up first. There is a height differential between the public space and the private space. It's not all on the same level. We agree with you a hundred percent that we want to have some shielding. We just don't want to be forced to have six feet of shielding which then blocks the private view.
That's, that's, that's fine, I mean, I think, you know, I don't think Weston and Sampson is suggesting a particular solution either. I'm fine with you coming back with an idea for that and, and I'm suggesting with my wild idea is to be creative if you can.
Well, again, we're looking at the height difference right now, but there's, there's a height difference from the public to the private space and then there is some, I believe they had some kind of landscaping there, so we will, we'll better define that for you. To your first, to your first point about the whole, the entire issue with the public space and private space, I am very familiar with that. I've got four hundred acres in Hangum, of which we have a commercial use right dead center of it and then a hundred and thirty-eight homes that surround it. And on a daily basis, I deal with having a hundred and thirty-eight people talking about the common space and the commercial activity and everything else. We're, this is our eighteenth year, I've been on the board for every year since, I have a standing membership on the condominium board. So unfortunately, I'm very familiar with. So unfortunately, I'm very familiar with the condominium boards, but also the issues that come up and arise between the residential and commercial space. Everything that you said earlier, we agree with. We agree that there should be some time limits. We agree that the public will have access to it in perpetuity. We agree that there'll be discussions amongst ourselves about what those hours are and what it looks like. And we're willing to do that. So I just want to give you comfort that we've got experience in how to deal with common area, and we have experience in how to deal with commercial and residential objectives.
Yeah, I, my only comment that this is a much, much smaller place than the property in Hingham, and there's been much bigger opportunity for tension between the two sides. So I just want to make sure we get this right, so that there's no Hatfield and McCoy fights down the road.
And to that, and I agree with you, and to that point, especially with the condominium owners, as well as the commercial, is that it all has to be defined upfront. So when someone buys a condominium, they know what to expect. Because you can't change the rules five years down the road. And one of the examples I use is at Black Rock, we have a security gate. Quite honestly, the reason for the security gate is not because Hingham is a tough neighborhood. It's because during the construction, we had a lot of teenagers driving through and doing donuts on our greens and fairways. So we put the gates up. It's now become a security. So while it's about $100,000 a year to maintain that both the club and the homeowners, there are some homeowners that don't want it, but it's already there. And others, other homeowners don't want to lose it. So we, we will set the expectations for the public area well before anyone moves in.
All right, so we've now gone quite far afield from this particular specific subject. How can we bring it together, if we want to vote on it, to send a message to the applicant and to make clear what it is we're agreeing to?
Well, I, I'm suggesting, you know, what we've talked about here in open space and the next section on the Roman numeral five of public amenity areas, that let's, before we vote on what conditions we will put in, let's hear their suggestion about the relationship. I have suggestions here. Other members of the board probably have suggestions as well. But this, this one, I'm prepared to hear from them first as to what they might suggest.
Okay, so.
I think, I think it ties into the Chapter 91 conditions that Kara and Adam are going to show us. So let's defer to seeing that and seeing what other thoughts George and Ted have before we vote on some.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put aside leaving out item four, Roman numeral four. We'll move to five, and then let's see if we can come back and get something straight about four.
So in Roman numeral four, and I, condition 32 is something we can just vote on and discuss right now. Basically, that condition says we're accepting their landscape plan. However, understanding that the conservation commission may come up with something different. They may, I think this goes to what you had mentioned at one hearing, Amy, about, you know, salt, salt tolerance plantings and everything. So I, I basically, I'm okay with their proposal, but Concom may change it, and if Concom changes it, Concom will control.
All right. Well, let's not leave that then. Does 33 go with 32?
No, 33 is about the materials.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's vote then on number 32. Tom Callahan?
I'm fine with Tom's suggestion.
Clark?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Paul Colery?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's fine.
Sorry, I'm laughing because Clark was tearing off into the sunset, and I thought.
I was reading, I was reading number 32. I was looking at it, not the sunset.
Okay, so we're, we're good with 30. We've got something on 32. So let's move to section five.
All right, we're gonna skip section five, because that's the public community space. We're gonna skip Roman numeral six, because that's about inclusionary zoning.
Okay.
Section seven, section seven, I will, I will be the first to admit that I've never been a traffic expert. I've never understood traffic studies. I roll my eyes and fall asleep at traffic studies. But Weston and Sampson had a lot to say about it. And, you know, and then as far, you know, this also involves parking. I know, maybe we just defer all the parking things, but a chart had been provided in that October exchange of letters of what spaces were going to be in which building. And I believe I took Weston and Sampson's comments to say, well, maybe there should be more non-residential in 124 than there is in 87. You know, so I was simply suggesting a switch of some numbers in the parking charts. And I don't know if you want to defer that discussion, this parking in general, or if George has, and Ted have any thoughts on my suggestion?
Okay, so this is.
Maybe you have your hand up.
Oh, sorry, Ted Lubitz?
Ted has his hand up.
Yeah, I just got that. And then George?
Just in response to that, it was our understanding that Weston and Sampson accepted our parking counts by building and concluded that we had adequate parking and didn't make any recommended changes to that. So if there's something we need to clarify on that, we will, but.
Well, all right, then maybe that was, maybe I actually had an original thought here. But the thinking might have been that there, you know, I'm going to assume for the moment that the residential space that faces the harbor is going to be a restaurant use or some kind of hospitality use. I guess the thinking is that the parking demands of one, will be north building, is going to be more heavily commercial than the others. And if you're going to designate spaces as residential and non-residential, and I don't know how you're going to police that, but that's not my concern. You know, maybe there should be more non-residential spaces in 124 than suggested here. I'm not changing the overall number. I'm just changing the allocation between the three buildings. That's just the thought that, given what the use, the commercial use in 124 might be, it might have a higher parking demand.
All right, I have George, and then it looks like Ted would like to speak again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, so with respect to that, the, in the parking by use, the parking within the building is really meant to be private for the residences. And that's an important characteristic of the project. From site security and safety, there will be some parking for employees of the commercial space that will have access to that, but it really is a, you know, security issue. So that's why we've, you know, dedicated it that way. And then the way that we plan on dealing with it is through signage. So to direct people to the appropriate parking for the commercial uses through that signage.
What's occurring to me right now is I look at the chart on that October letter. What they wrote in that chart was, non-residential parking 124 required 10 spaces, proposed eight. At 87 Elm Street, required four, but proposed six. I guess that's where I was getting, flipped the two so that 124 Elm Street is 10 spaces as required. And at 87, it's only four spaces as required. That's where it came. Now that refreshing my memory, that's where the thought came from.
Yeah, and, and our engineer, and we responded to that and worked with Weston and Sampson to provide the, you know, counts by use that they deemed to be sufficient for the.
Well, I, I leave that, that's one for the board to think about. You know, in the Weston and Sampson letter from October 13, or their response from October 13, do we use that chart, or do we tweak the chart in the way that I'm suggesting in this condition? That's the decision for the board. And after hearing Ted's explanation, I'm not strongly either way.
So I don't know if this is possible to do. I'm leaving this to Eve and Lauren to say. But this is a really dense section of Tom's conditions. And the discussion of the parking is complicated. We know it's gonna get, that's gonna be the big deal for zoning. And I would like to make sure that what we have in this text is the most up to date, that there, that, that we didn't end up with the, we need to have the final numbers that were at the last meeting that we have, confirmed by Weston, and, and so that we can verify we have the right numbers. That's what I'm concerned about. So I would request that we take the parking discussion out of this, and we will address it by making sure that we have the right numbers.
Okay, that's fine. We, we do.
Oh, well, let me, Mr. McGoldrick?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Lubitz? All right, so let's move down then to number 46. Eve?
Sorry, I heard you, Madam Chair, I heard you say my name. So I, I wanted to comment. I think, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong. I think they have the right number of parking spaces on site, but they're asking for is to allocate more of them for residential than is required by the bylaw. So they have the right number of spaces, but they want two per unit, and the bylaw only requires one and a half. I, I don't, I'm not saying, I don't know this for sure. I'm just asking, is that where the issue is? That it's, that there's the not right number of parking spaces, but how you're allocating them for exclusive use is what the issue is. And maybe that's not correct. So that's why I asked.
Is that correct, Tom? I don't think so.
Yeah, I, as I've said, I'm just, I'm just flipping numbers on that chart between required and proposed. And basically, I'm suggesting do the required number, not the proposed number.
Ted Lubitz?
So, so we have the total parking counts, and we're not asking to allocate them any differently between residential or commercial. So we have, in total, we've got the amount required for commercial, and then we have the amount required for residential. So what I'm saying is, between the sites, it's how it's allocated. So, but the total, we satisfy the demand studies and the requirement for the residential.
All right. So does this enable us to vote on this item? That clarification? Board members, anyone? I mean, do you want to?
I wrote, I wrote the condition. I don't care if we stick with what they're proposing or not. I'm not, I'm not, it's not something to go to the law about.
So should I, okay, should it be recommended? Do you wish to strike it?
The, the condition will be, the condition would then instead be that we are going to adopt the Table 1 about parking allocation that's set forth in the Weston and Sampson letter of October 6, and the CHI response of October 13.
All right. If anybody finds an error in that specification that Tom just did, before we, we adjourn this evening, it would be helpful for you to call that out to us. But we're gonna go back and check regardless.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we move down to number 46?
46 and 47 are just stating the obvious, that what they have proposed for eliminating curb cuts and using the existing curb cuts and access points, they're just going to do. So it doesn't, we're not in any kind of disagreement here. Number 50, because of the whole traffic thing with the.
Wait a minute, can I, can I please, let me close those couple out, so I don't keep accumulating with no votes. So let's take item number 46 about discontinuance of existing curb cuts and the creation of a single vehicular access point from the west building and serving the north and south buildings together. I'd like to put those together and get a view of the board as a whole. Paul Grady, I'm looking for either a, agree with these conditions or disagree?
I'm fine with 46.
Okay, Paul, Clark Brewer?
Yeah, 46 is all right.
Let me come back to you, Clark. Eric Potter?
I'm, I'm okay with 46. Right, connection's a little spotty right now.
Okay.
I said 46 was okay.
Yeah, I've got that. I was gonna try to do 46 and 47. So let's just, you said yes to 46, Eric said yes to 46, Paul Grady said yes to 46, Paul Colery?
Yes to 46.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to 47. Everybody want to look at it for just a minute? Single vehicular access points from the west building and serving the north and south buildings together.
That's fine.
All right, Paul Grady?
Hi.
Eric Potter?
Works for me.
Tom Callahan? Paul Colery?
That's fine.
All right, let's move on. There is.
As you can see, the 48 and 49 are missing, so there's only 93 conditions, not 95 conditions.
There you go. You get an award for that. Okay, so now we're moving over into the elderly numbers. Yahoo.
So in number 50, I understood Weston and Sampson to suggest a bump out at some point to help, I suppose it was for traffic calming and slowing people down because of the poor sight lines with the existing intersection. I think this is worthwhile to have as long as we have the existing intersection. We're gonna go on a little further and talk about a redesign of the intersection. You know, Weston and Sampson suggested this as a safety measure, and I think we should adopt this as a condition.
Okay, so 50, 51, and 52 are related to one another. Is that correct?
Not, not exactly. 50 is simply about this one thing, and I just know from old co-host of history, as will George, that bump outs are always controversial in co-hosts. So it was something that Weston and Sampson suggested in one particular spot to solve one particular problem. So I treat that in isolation.
All right. In the interest of time, and I'll remember this one in case when we get to other discussions where it might be relevant. But I'd like to see if there is any feeling on the board about this one. So on number 50, you're being asked to approve this. Clark Brewer?
If it's a bump out, out into the street, I, I, I actually agree that some of these areas that are off locus or off the developer's property should be looked at and should be optimized. So in terms of the actual configuration, I think it's flexible. But so yes, on the bump out access point or other is safety improvement.
All right, thank you, Paul Grady, before you run away.
No, I'm still here, Amy. I agree with what Clark just said.
All right, thank you, Eric Potter?
I'm all for safety.
Paul Colery?
I concur. Safety is an number one concern.
All right, great. Now, so we move on to 51 and.
Yep, 51 is just about, again, Weston and Sampson suggested that there would be a need for sign. So this is a future commitment. Again, because of the poor sight lines, warning that there's a driveway here, that kind of thing. So I'm just suggesting, following on Weston and Sampson, that the applicant and the town work together to put up appropriate signage for safety along Elm Street.
All right, let me get a vote on that. Clark Brewer?
Well, it's the same issue of safety and the design of that area. So yes?
Okay, Paul Grady?
Agreed.
Eric Potter?
Great.
Paul Colery, thank you. All right, but I have to do it. I have to go through each one of the. All right, but I have to do it. I have to go through each one of these.
All right, well, I'll, I'll. We're gonna shorten up some things coming up, so.
Yeah, so let's do fifty two, please.
Now, the only thing about fifty two is if I read the plans right, I only saw one. Dedicated crosswalk where the existing one is that leads from the town parking lot over towards the Legion. I'm just suggesting three other spots around the site for crosswalks. And that's, that's the only difference. Again, I thought, I thought that was another safety thing that should be added.
All right, looking for a vote here.
Some of these are gonna be a part of the Elm Street redesign.
Right, we're, we're banking on that, but we wanna codify it here. So can I get a vote, Clark? Eve?
On fifty two?
Hang on one second, Eve.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say I, I, that I think you can put these in as a condition, but you have to sort of also. Give yourself an out in case the town or DPW or some other transportation agency says you can't put them there. There, I, I do know that there are some requirements for where you can put crosswalks and lights and all that, but. So as long as the town allows them, they'll be responsible for doing them. But if the town says no, you can't say.
Yeah, that's fine. All I, I, I just, I just thought there should be more than one crosswalk suggested for this site.
Okay, so we take that as a friendly amendment and we will make adjustments in the language. So Clark said yes, Paul said yes. Paul, you didn't say yes, Paul.
Which one?
Number fifty two.
Me or Cleary?
Oh, sorry, Paul Grady.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Eric Potter. Paul Colery.
Agreed.
Okay, fifty three is another item on safety related to color and, and crosswalks. I'm gonna ask for a vote. Clark Brewer.
It's the same, it's the same issue.
Exactly, that's why I just want you, I, I'd really like to get you to, items fifty three and fifty four are basically. Related to all of the ones you've just talked about.
Fifty three and fifty four, it's related and, and yes, I'd support get, getting these things. Coordinated with the town and, and as safe as possible.
All right, Paul Grady.
Crosswalks use the yellow, am I incorrect? Is that he's looking at color?
I don't, well, we don't use yellow downtown. I, all I, all I'm suggesting is they talk to the town about it and be consistent with the rest of the town. I don't know what, what do we use downtown, green?
I'm fine with that.
All right, and also that the crosswalks are functional as it relates to heavy truck use. Then Eric Potter.
Here, those been said.
Paul Colery.
Agreed.
Okay, so here we are on a big one, fifty five. And it's mentioned in. It's been a point of discussion. It was a point of discussion the last time we got together. And so, would you wanna speak to it, Tom?
Yeah, let me just explain the thinking of this. I mean, I, I think that intersection is a disaster to begin with. With the curved roads. You know, at a meeting of the master plan implementation, maybe Monday night, we're talking about Elm Street generally with. Chief Sylvia mentioned how people just simply go too fast. To those roads. I, I, I'm suggesting this for two reasons. One is to answer Weston and Sampson's traffic concerns. But again, with the caveat that I'm not a traffic engineer, that the redesign and the squaring off. Of the intersection. Might slow everybody down. This, and, and I, to the extent this project is going to add traffic at these two points, it's going to. Add more cars coming in where Weston and Sampson says there's poor sight line than what we have today. I think it's a fair tie in that this project is impacting something offsite. There's something they should help us, not exclusively fix for us, but help us fix. The second factor that dictates this is that despite the bylaw. Dictating that the building be moved forward towards the sidewalk, it is going to be a mass right on the sidewalk that is not experienced today. And by eliminating Cove Road and bringing green space over that way. We can have the high building, and, and this is a mitigation for me from the height of the building. But still have a feeling of setback that we have today. The hotel is setback a little from the sidewalk and the roadway. The new building is gonna be right smack on top of it. So I, again, I think the visual impact of these new buildings. They're gonna be taller. And somewhere, I might have mentioned the word a canyon effect. I think there's a mitigation for that. We bring green space up close to the site, again, by redesigning that intersection. I gave you a sketch idea. And then at, at the last meeting, Clark emailed me another one during the meeting and. Somebody else in town has designed something almost exactly the same, and I had not seen that before. So I don't think the. Redesign is a major undertaking because I think there's only so many alternatives that you can do there. But I do think because of the traffic and the visual impacts of this development on that intersection. We should condition some degree of, of contribution to fixing that. I'm suggesting here simply paying for the redesign. I didn't, I don't expect them to pay for the construction. I'm gonna volunteer to pay for some of the construction. I certainly would welcome that, but that, that, that's the thinking behind that. That this project is impacting that intersection in an adverse way. And that's why I think we can do this.
Eve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that this redesign could be something that could be attributed to mitigation. I would only suggest that the condition perhaps be written that the applicant would pay a certain amount of money. For the design, but not actually have them do the design. You want the, the town to do the design with all of the resources that they have. Because if they do a design and then the town doesn't like it, then, you, you know, I, I think having them do a design in the vacuum doesn't make sense, but. To say you have to pay X number of dollars towards the designs is something that, again, they have to agree to, but it is something that would be mitigating. Any of their impacts. So I, I agree with your.
I also wanna mention, you know, at the master plan implementation committee, we did hear a report from the. Elm Street Corridor subgroup. And I advocated that the consideration of this intersection be separated from the rest of it. I don't think. We're very far along in dealing with the Elm Street Corridor ideas, you know, other than preparing for the warding that's going on. But I, I am going to assume that George and Ted's project is going to move along a lot quicker than the Elm Street Corridor process. So. It's another reason I, I, I said this the other night, that we should deal with this issue in connection with this project because. This project's impact is gonna be felt long before whatever else we do to Elm Street is gonna be realized.
All right, thank you for that. Do I have any comments from board members? Clark Brewer.
I, I think I've already said that, you know, participating, figuring out a way to participate into a redesign. In the public space, particularly picking up public parking around the site of this project. Will, will benefit directly the, the developer's project. And to the extent that it's gonna be done anyway, and then the, the town's goals are to make a connection between the, the village and the, and the harbor. Yes, you know, I, I say yes on, on, on trying to get some. Collaboration on this.
All right, thank you, Eric Potter.
I have no comment on this one right now.
Thank you, Paul Colery.
I, I have no further comment to add to what Clark said.
Thank you, Paul Grady.
I'm gonna agree with Clark right now.
All right, then that takes us through number fifty five, in which.
I, I would add that, I would add that I would welcome, you know, the applicant to submit any ideas on this, thoughts on this one too.
Well, I, I think that we would be probably, I mean, so this is a question, I guess, for Karis and. Potentially, and maybe, and that is, so we don't really have much specified in here, other than. Do we need to have a greater level of specificity as to the partnership relationship that is inferred by this conversation? And if so, can we change this to reflect how we want the language to present the, the state, that, this statement? Okay, so we can change it. Yes, because it's, it's not, it will, it will have to be rearranged.
Moving quickly, fifty six and fifty seven are two other items that Weston and Sampson suggested about burns, curves. There was some additional information they were looking for, and they wanted screening of the parking areas to be shown, so. Think those are easy to adopt and easy to compile. See, Ted has his hand.
Ted Lubick.
Just with respect to fifty seven, this item here. Creates additional safety concerns that we identified by providing screening at that parking lot area. So that's why we actually in our, or one of our responses. Recommended that, that is not additionally screened. And so it would almost contradict what was proposed for bump out in the crosswalk to create. For condition. So that was discussed by our engineer and with Weston and Sampson, and I, I believe it's a design guideline. That could be waived. So that was what we had proposed.
It has, does, does anybody know if Weston and Sampson weighed in again on that? I, I was just going by their comments from October. I mean, I'll, I'm be glad to defer to what Weston and Sampson recommends. That's what I'm doing here. If they change that recommendation, that's fine.
Ted, was it Kevin Arrow that spoke with them?
I, no, it was our traffic engineer. And it was, it was one of our responses and, you know, I, quite frankly, I think that they were looking at it. From the design guideline perspective, not from a safety perspective. And so, so.
Well, I, I would just like to have confirmation that they're okay with that. I mean, I, s- safety should overrule design.
All right, then. Then we'll, we'll proceed to, proceed to verify the numbers in number fifty seven.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, well. Section eight about sidewalks, I'm gonna defer discussion about that because that gets into a lot of the materials that we use for the sidewalks. Then the ADA compliance. Section nine and condition sixty four is about water dependent uses. That was written early on when we were talking about kiosks and. Kayak rentals and stuff. I don't know if it's necessary. It might, you know. It's okay to be included, but it's not necessary in the sense that there is no longer a kayak rental proposal. So I'll, I'll leave it to the board how it wants to be.
Well, I can see what it does in terms of locking the applicant or the subsequent owners. To a set of practices that relate to town and town amenity.
And it could be the town that's locked into this.
Right.
Be on the town property that we're doing kayak.
Right. Okay, any comments, Clark Brewer?
No comment.
Paul Grady.
No comment on this right now.
Eric Potter. Paul Colery.
No comment.
Thank you. Does anybody wanna take a break? We should think about timing here. We're almost done with Tom's comments.
So why don't we just move on through Tom's comments and then just press on?
Yeah, let, let, let me try to be, let me try to be quick and do some in bulk rather than. So the next section on utilities and stormwater management, I don't think any of those conditions say anything that's out of line or unreasonable. About conditions on other permits connecting to our system, water system, sewer system, some Weston and Sampson. The only thing is about, I, I did throw in something here about utilities being underground. I don't know if that's feasible. I don't know if that's in the plans. I didn't see it one way or the other. This is number sixty eight. Otherwise, I think the rest in that section can be voted on in bulk because they're just either stating the obvious or stating some Weston and Sampson. Suggestions, but sixty eight is the one, I don't know, you know, if people feel strongly about utilities underground, I happen to, but. It's, it's not a deal breaker or a major thing.
Ted Lubitz, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, just on the utility question. So all the utilities on the private land will be underground, but not the public utilities.
All right, thank you. So then.
So then I would just, you know, take a look at those conditions sixty five through seventy one and see if we can just do a vote on them in bulk unless. Certain George have any particular question or comment.
I think if, again, if we just change sixty eight.
Oh, yeah, I've made, I've made a note to that.
I don't know if John Kevin Arrow's on, I don't know if you have any issues, John Kevin Arrow with sixty five through seventy one.
We were so boring, he went to sleep.
I have that tendency.
There we go.
Leave it for now, but we, we certainly want the opportunity to come back to any of these. I mean, we're not, we're not voting on conditions.
Right, okay.
Trying to get sentiment.
Okay, so. I'm gonna do a sweep here then for us, sixty five through seventy one. Clark Brewer.
They all look pretty straightforward to me.
Paul Grady.
I'd agree.
Paul Colery.
Agreed.
Eric Potter.
Yeah, straightforward, I agree.
Thank you.
The next one, seventy two under category eleven was, again, pretty straightforward. It just, you know. My logical brain is to straighten out line, boundary lines where we can straighten them out and with appropriate easements that are needed in both directions. Again, not a major issue, but it just common, common sense to me to straighten out that job of line.
Comments, Clark Brewer?
George, I think is gonna tell us that, that trading. Straightening out the line is not possible. It's just a matter of getting the easement squared away.
So we did have this conversation with town manager a year plus ago. And the, the issue is, is that to straighten the line out involves land swaps. When you involve land swaps, you need town meeting vote and then you need the state legislature to kick in. So that's when it was agreed upon. That's what is agreed upon, just to do the easements and we're, we're, there's an article coming up at the appropriate time before the select meeting, just to work the easements out.
Okay, as a matter of fact, somebody told me today for the first time that there had been some past discussions about land swaps. And yes, I'm sure it's all bureaucratic, so that's fine. If we work out the appropriate easements, it's all good.
Right, Karis North?
Yep, that was my point. It's Article ninety seven land, so it, it can't be given up or swapped without. A significant process that you don't wanna go into.
All right, that's fine.
All right, then, let's vote on number seventy two. Clark Brewer.
Well, we.
No, I think we're removing it.
Thing out, okay, got it. Sorry, I was.
Yeah, we would remove it for some very generalized language that we're gonna work out the. Yeah, we would remove it for some very generalized language that we're going to work out the appropriate easements that are needed.
Right, which is already, we've had a number of discussions about it in earlier times.
The next section about inspections, I just wanted, I wanted to just zero in, I don't think a lot of it is controversial, but I want to zero in on seventy-five and want you to just get where I'm coming from. I alluded to it earlier tonight, that there had been some belief that the project in the village, the new project in the village was overbuilt. And by the time that was discovered, it was built, it was done. And what do you do? And there's very few town boards and very few Superior Court judges that want to order people to tear things down. So I, I, I'm looking for an inspection regime where we avoid an after-the-fact problem by ensuring that we're in compliance with the plans at various discrete stages of the construction. I know there's an issue that Paris may raise about who does that inspection, and I don't particularly care who does it. But I'm trying to propose a more detailed inspection regime so that whatever happened on James Lane, whether it's true or not, and I've heard arguments both ways, that it wasn't a non, you know, I heard one argument that it was non-compliant, and another one that it wasn't. I want to avoid that by making sure at different parts of instruction that we catch problems before we can, because once they're built, it's very difficult to reverse it. So it's, it's a thought, it's, oh, this one is pure, open for discussion and negotiation with the applicant. It's not, but it's, it's an idea that I think you need to put in for a project, again, of this magnitude.
All right, Paul Grady?
James Lane is true. It was overbuilt. And so wouldn't the, you know, proper policing done correctly by a, uh, what is it, the building inspector who's paid by the time to do their job? So wouldn't that, uh?
Yeah, I, I.
Need to that, Tom? If they do their.
Yeah, that's what this is supposed to do, is police.
Job correctly, that is.
Well, again, we, we can't control quality or capabilities of the person who does it, and I'm not going to cast discourages on.
I'm not casting discourages. If the plan could be placed, I would agree with you. If the guidelines could be placed for proper policing, that's all I'm saying.
That's, that's what this is supposed to be, policing during construction before a problem happens.
Well, well, typically, you get an as-built for a foundation, and the as-built would match the engineer's plan. John Cavener may have a comment on how this typically works.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's correct. I mean, obviously, the building inspectors, it's his purview for compliance, but this will be a requirement of certificate of occupancy, or if you want to make this a condition of approval, it's a standard condition that you submit an as-built.
All right. So where does that leave us then with this set of specifications? I think that on the planning board, as well as on the master plan implementation committee, looking through zoning, one of the big issues that comes up is process. And so what's happening here is we're trying to ensure that we know what will be the process under, upon which this project is overseen. And so we're trying to specify for ourselves what accountability is as we are trying to specify it.
I, I just want to say something to John's comment. I, you know, I understand the concept of as-builts, but as-built is as-built, so everything has already happened. And let's, let's take the example of the project in the village, that it did go over. Well, when, when they, when the living spaces were being framed out, wouldn't that have been a better opportunity to catch it before we got the as-built and it was done, and then we found out it was overbuilt? That's all I'm suggesting here, is that we, we have other interim steps of inspection where we catch these potential problems before they happen. That's all. So, I mean, if we can work out what's an appropriate inspection regime, this is just my off-the-tuff suggestion, but it could be, it could be illogical from a development point of view, a construction point of view, but I just want to catch problems before they happen.
All right, thanks, Tom. Karis North?
Thank you. So appreciating and recognizing the, the concern that's been expressed, I do want to say that, that this condition is almost as if the planning board is directing the building inspector through the vehicle of a permit to the applicant. And I'm, I'm not sure that's an appropriate way to address the problem that you're trying to address. And, and, and that's, that's my concern. It, it, I, I, I think that you can talk about an inspection regime, and if the applicant's willing to talk about one, that's fine. But ultimately, this is the building inspector's, you know, process and responsibility. And perhaps there needs to be additional communication there, but putting this burden on the applicant is starting to move beyond the, the planning board's authority.
I, I respectfully disagree. He's, he's not only the building inspector, he's the zoning enforcement officer, and this is.
Correct.
This is a permit based on a zoning bylaw and enforcing that bylaw. And I also think the building inspector can be directed by us, and in certain circumstances, should be directed by us. And if he's going to be our inspection agent, as, you know, and I know I might have suggested Weston and Sampson be up here, and I'm, I'm fine to give up if I can't do that, but I, I, I don't see a real problem with us setting conditions for inspections, and that if he or she, whoever the building inspector is, just follows.
I'd like to weigh in on this. This is simply, just a minute, please. This is simply specifying the set of issues that we want to get a report on from whoever the person is who's doing the inspection. Because at this point, we do not get documentation like this. And since over time, this project's going to come back to us, and we have a big stake in it and a lot of, of responsibility, this is a check for us in terms of the, the appropriate practices that we are a part of on behalf of the applicant. It's our responsibility to protect the applicant when a town employee is involved. So this is basically a two-way street which both parties benefit. Paul Grady?
I'm going to kind of parrot that. I disagree with what Ms. North was just saying in its entirety. The, we're not trying to put the onus on the, on the developer at all. It's more on the town, us as the planning board, and the building inspector. And it's up to us to maybe ensure those guidelines are passed on to the building inspector, so nothing does happen that's untoward, or mistakes aren't made like there were at James Lane. That's all. But it's not on, it's no slur on the developer or any of the project. It's on our responsibilities, and the responsibilities of the building inspector that those guidelines be met. We should be able to set some of those guidelines as strict as.
And I, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're, you are then making a distinction relative to the language in the statement on the page. Because it says, okay, so that, you, are you asking for a modification of the language? Because right now it reads, "These specific inspections be conducted by the board outside consultants at the expense of the applicant or its successors and interest."
What I'm saying is that the building inspector, if we were able to set parameters for the building inspector to work under, then we shouldn't have a problem. The developer shouldn't have to incur anything, anything over and above that the developer would incur, but the town doing its job and the building inspector doing its job, I don't see in putting any burden on anybody.
Okay, I want to go to Eve and then Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that in the draft that was put, put out by the planning director, Ms. Lynn, the, the order of the conditions is slightly different than the order of the conditions in Mr. Callahan's draft, and the purpose for that is it makes it easier to enforce. So it, it says, "Before any site work is done, these things have to be checked." And the planner and the building inspector will work together to make sure that all of those conditions are met before anything is issued that is not correct. And the kinds of things that are in here are what we would be looking for, that it matches the plan, and that if they have to provide you with any condo docs or any of those other things that we may put in conditions, and then after, you know, before building permit and before any certificate of occupancy. So the conditions in, in the draft that the planning director put together, they don't have the conditions, but they have the, the categories by which we should be looking at them. And I think that would make it a far easier document to follow, to ensure that some of these mistakes don't get made.
You've seen these mistakes before, Ms. Tapper.
I, I, I understand that. I, I, I understand. So I'm, I'm suggesting that, that I'm suggesting that the way that the, that the way we ultimately lay out the conditions may, may make it easier to enforce all of the conditions.
Okay, so.
And just, just to move this along, I, I did not expect a final vote on this one because it is something different. I did not get to see what Lauren distributed. I saw it, but I didn't compare it in detail to this, and we certainly need to work on that. I, I would suggest we fine-tune this one. Again, George and Ted, John, Kevin Arrow, have any input on that? I would most certainly appreciate it. And, and we just need to fine-tune this better. And then I would suggest, otherwise, that under the section twelve, the other conditions, I think, appear as straightforward. Take a look at them and we vote on those in bulk, but leave seventy-five aside for the town meeting.
All right, so what you're suggesting, Tom, is that we put this one aside right now. We, I think that Eve's comment about making it more succinct and in alignment with language that will, will work, and, and, you know, in relationship to the person who would be implementing this request, and that we would bring this back at our next meeting.
Yeah, and then just, if you, if you need to or want to vote on the other ones under section twelve, then they'll, they'll be there. I, I, I don't think there are anything, some of them, some of them are from the general conditions that came from that TOD project that Lauren shared with me, particularly the last two, I believe. So I don't, I don't think the other ones are controversial, so if you want to vote on them.
Yeah, these are, these are a little bit just like those ones up here, in the sense that it's extremely specific, when in fact, can, is, can you use a general statement to talk about such things as the appropriate maintenance of the construction site? Or do we really need to condition it down to the set of issues like keeping a clean construction site? I mean, what's the, what's the level of specificity we need here? Because if we could compress this a little bit, that'd be great, but if we can't, we won't.
Well, I mean.
Uh, Ms. Karis?
There are state laws and codes about how to maintain a construction site in a safe way. I think, you know, if you need to make a specific reference to the Massachusetts Building Code or some other particular statute on, by the specific statutory reference. But I think any contractor who's going to be building something of this size is going to know these things. You know, the, the only other thing I ever see specifically discussed is dust control, you know? If you want to get specific about that, that they have to hose things down every day to make sure there's no dust, I, I don't know. I don't think you need to do that. I think state codes cover all of that.
Okay, so how would you recommend that we, or, Karis, would you like to say something?
Well, I, my recommendation is that these are our standard type of construction conditions. They're sufficient, and that I believe there's language in the general conditions anyway that requires compliance with the building code, and if not, it should be there. And so that should cover it.
Tom Grady? Or excuse, Paul Grady? Tom Grady?
All right, wait for that one. Uh, this might be a question directed at Ms. North. Are we able to maybe propose weekly inspections? Would that be, will we make that part of the conditions? Weekly inspections?
Of the?
Of the, of the project, as it moves on. Again, I'm just looking to avoid past mistakes. That's, that.
No, I, I appreciate that, and, and my concern is that these are conditions that are binding upon the applicant, but you're really trying to direct the building inspector. The applicant will comply with whatever the building inspector tells them to do, and if the building inspector wants to be on-site every week, the building inspector can be on-site every week. And if you want to suggest.
That's my question. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I didn't mean to.
That's all right.
My question is, so as a board, can we make that suggestion or put into the building inspector that that's part of what they, they, they have to do? That's all I'm asking.
Yep.
But we can do that.
I, I think you can do that, at, at least the, make the, you can't compel the building inspector to do it. You can request that they do it, and you can ask, you require that the applicant comply with it.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Clark Brewer?
Yeah, um, this is a project that's large enough that would be control construction so that an architect and the structural engineer, other engineers would have to provide affidavits at the beginning of the project, at, at, perhaps during the project and, and at, at the end. So it's sort of a, it's sort of a beyond a, a local building inspector's jurisdiction, because they're not necessarily knowledgeable about complex buildings. Although it wouldn't be bad to have the building inspector do a walkthrough and actually require the, the control construction affidavits at the beginning and at the end, because Bob hasn't always done that. So that nothing falls through the cracks. Having, having the building inspector do a job site walkthrough once a week for this, or at appropriate times, whether it's required or not, whether he's doing a sign-off or not, doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt the project, and I don't think it's an over, overly burdensome to the building inspector.
Okay, Lauren, Lauren Lind?
Good, Madam Chair. I would just like to state that we, the town has hired a new building inspector who began on this Monday, and he is available to attend the next planning board meeting. I would suggest that if there are certain things that you'd like to speak with him about on this, you can take it up with him at that time. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Same with John Helen.
Tom?
No, I, I, again.
Okay.
Want to defer, defer this to us working out the details of this.
Okay, okay, so this is, this is open.
Vote on seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine.
Okay, so we're, we're down at eighty?
No, we need a vote on accepting the condition, the other conditions in that section.
Well, if I.
If you want to defer the whole section, that's fine.
Well, I just want to get, make sure that I don't end up with language that doesn't make sense by not having the ability to modify it all at once. Okay, so we will. So that it's tighter and, but exactly what you're trying to get.
All right, I'll just put down the job. The next section is about the performance bond. We don't need to discuss it, we're going to discuss that further. The next section, fourteen, is about the lawsuit that Lori brought against the property, and I have to admit that I didn't get to check its current status online today. The lawsuit doesn't concern me, but I just don't think we should ignore it as a board. I mean, maybe Adam or George can tell me what happened. Was the attachment motion that acted on yet? I don't know. As far as I know, the case is still open and pending, so there's always a threat something might happen. You know, if the worst-case scenario was that Peter Roy regained control of the property, he would still be subject to our permit, so I'm not overly concerned about it, but I'm just suggesting these conditions just because I don't think we should ignore the subject when there is the kind of lawsuit that there is out there.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Madam Chair, this is Adam Brodsky. I don't know the status of the lawsuit, but I believe the board's initial concern had to do with site control. but I believe the board's initial concern had to do with site control. And, uh, the property was deeded to Chi Elm Street Realty LLC. They have title to the property and we provided town council with a copy of the deed. So I don't think that there should be any conditions relating to a unrelated lawsuit in the permit for this project.
Well, I, I know the deed changed hands in August. I remember we discussed it at a meeting, but nevertheless, at the time I started to write this and at the time we had that discussion, there had been a motion for a real estate attachment that was continued a number of times. And if I understand Mr. Roy's lawsuit correctly, he might be seeking control of the property. Or even if it's money damages, it could be money damages that impact the financial viability of the project. So I think it's, it's proper for us to be concerned about it, but I'm not upset. I, as a lawyer, I'm not obsessed about it and I'm not worried about its ultimate outcome. But I don't think we can ignore it. George, George maybe knows more what's going on.
George McGoldrick?
Raising my hand. Uh, so the, to Mr. Callahan's point, it is, it is, there's no chance that Mr. Roy will gain control. He's got a lawsuit against the former owner and was somehow able to attach all the properties. It's a small, it's a de minimis number compared to the project size. So it's not going to impact the project and it'll have to be resolved before the construction loan sometime next summer. Um, there's discussions with him now. We fully expect it's going to be resolved, but it's, it's not a, it, it is, there's no chance that he, it doesn't give him any ability to get control of the property. It's not even a large enough number for him to even be considering getting control of the property.
No, I, I, I assume that at some point you would have to resolve it with him at minimum, if not outright victory in court. But all I'm saying is, you know, uh, you know, building in some contingency so that it doesn't upset this permit or interfere with the permit. That's all I'm suggesting here. Again, I'm not personally worried that this is going to be a, a major threat to the project.
Again, I don't know how, it, it, it's like, it's mechanics lean, basically. It's a plumber who didn't get paid. That's basically what we're talking about. So to put it at the condition to the project doesn't make any sense to us.
Um, Care, I want to ask Karis North. Is there any reason by state expectation or state law that we would be, um, in some way in arrears with legal precedent to be working on a project or initiating a project or approving a project which has a legal suit against it?
No. There is not. And, and, and I don't see, and I spoke to Mr. Callahan about this. I don't see, I've never seen a condition like this before. Um, but I don't really see any particular need or basis for it because as he stated, if, and, and I'm trying to look up the docket here and I'm not having luck getting it to pull up, but, um, you know, if there's any transfer of the property and I take Mr. McGoldrick's assertions at face value, if they chose to do the same project, if that happened, they're subject to the conditions of this special permit. So I, I don't know that it adds anything to the process.
I agree. I agree that the subject, it's not a major threat. I threw it out there because at the time I drafted it, there was more uncertainty about where that lawsuit stood. I didn't understand what it was all asking for. I have since, you know, seen things online. I know what the case is about. I, I just, again, I just threw it out there as something to be aware of and concerned about, but not, it's not a deal breaker about this permit. So that's fine. We want to take it out. That's fine. I want everybody to be aware of it still exists. That's all.
Mr. McGoldrick?
I agree with Mr. Callahan. She's just come out. We'll get it resolved. I, I, I mean, by throwing out that Mr. Roy may get control, that's, that's,
I don't agree.
That's yelling fire in his ear. That's outrageous. And I'm laughing, I'm laughing about it. I'm saying that's just so out of the realm. But now someone's going to hear it. Luckily, there's only seven other people listening in. But I don't want any conspiracy theorists out there thinking, oh, I heard Mr. Roy's taken over the project. Not a chance. Trust me.
I, I, I made the notation to take it out. Okay.
You think we're in the hospitality business. We're in the cleanup business. We've been cleaning up somebody's disaster for the last two years. This is one hanging thing that we're finishing cleaning up.
All right. So can I get a motion here about this particular point?
Don't, don't even bother. I just, it'll, it'll be out of the mix.
Okay. So we will remove this and 83 is expunged.
Um, the next section 15, I think states the obvious about other permits and other agencies. I don't know if it's controversial or we just get put in almost as a general condition, set of general conditions. So I don't know if you want to vote on the whole of section 15.
This is like standard boilerplate that Lauren.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I don't think there's anything major about it. So if, if, if just by acclamation, we say those are going to be conditioned.
Let's, let's move on.
Yeah. Number nine, number 92 is the only one I, you know, it's like, uh, prohibiting uses. And I, I, I honestly do not know what the town's overall position about the Airbnbs are. I don't know if the waterfront zoning or the village.
I don't think there is any position about it, Tom.
Yeah. And I don't, and I don't know if our waterfront zoning uses and village district uses, which could apply to these two properties, uh, deal with it. But I know that for some people, you know, the fact that somebody's using Airbnb creates a stink. So, you know, George, this is something, do you think from a marketing point of view, does, you know, having a ban on Airbnb help you with condos or not? I know condo owners who freak out when their neighbors Airbnb their unit. I know others who don't care. So I'm just, again, this is just a suggestion, do you, you know, because people feel strongly about the short-term rentals, one way or the other.
Mr. McGoldrick?
I don't have a problem if this is in. Uh, again, in the Hingham project, we have a restriction that you cannot rent your unit out for less than a 12 month period. So it kind of follows in the same idea. So I, we, we don't have a problem with this one.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, okay. Just to make sure that we did define what short term means so that this doesn't impact what George's practices in Hingham. Because I could imagine somebody owning the, the condominium and needing to be in Europe for a year and would really like somebody to live in their condominium. And I, I just wonder if that's a, an opportunity that is, would be constrained. So we need to make sure the language is very.
Well, we, we can put in language that it would be a, a short-term rental defined as something that's less than 12 months. You know, whatever, I mean, George, if you have the suggested language of what you have in, in Blackrock, that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I can provide that. We'll, we'll send it over.
Yeah, thank you. 93 goes back to one of my earlier comments about reviewing the condominium documents, but really only as with respect to compliance with certain sections. It's not, it's not to play second lawyer about whether these are great condo documents or lousy condo documents. It's really just to ensure, uh, you know, in this, this particular condition from the map, as I've mentioned elsewhere, but it's again, I just want to make sure the docs comply with the things that tie into this permit and the volume. On the violation section, I'm going to leave that for Paris. Paris and I discussed it. I don't know that it's problematic the way it's written, but if Paris has any thoughts she wants to share, feel free. This is on the violation section?
Yeah, no, those were fine. I didn't have any issues with those.
Okay. Whoo.
Sorry. It wasn't 95, it was 93.
So we have two more sets of comments. Does anybody want to take like a five minute break? One breaker. I think let's just take five minutes, get a glass of water. Uh, the next two are, are not that big of a deal, but let me forecast what's going to happen at the end. We're going to, we're going to recognize that we still have some big areas that we are not going to be able to address. We're not going to take on the, the affordable housing issue tonight. We're not going to take on the big issues that we sequestered because it's 9:51 PM. So that is going to be telling you what our meeting is for the following meeting on, I think the 16th will be that we're going to corral the big issues and then we'll try to stick around long enough to, uh, move this forward. Mr. Brodsky?
Madam Chair, thank you. This has been very helpful, but a, a question. Is it the intention of the board to close the public portion of the hearing this evening?
Uh, I think we will probably take a, a decision on that at, when we get done with the other two pieces of information. But I'm, uh, I'm happy to hear what the board folks want to do. Is there any sentiment right now to make a vote to close the hearing?
I, I would like to keep it open so that as part of our deliberation, and I think Karis talked this up at the last meeting, it allows us to have some give and take with the applicant on this. Cause otherwise we closed it, we can't take any new information. And I'd rather that we, we have that opportunity for some given take.
I will say that we have two topics which we have punted specifically because we didn't think we had the, the right information or the right configuration. So we would have to be bringing in new information or new configurations if we close. Adam, excuse me, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we're, we're not talking about bringing in new information. We discussed a process whereby we could participate in a discussion, um, during your deliberations regarding these topics. I don't think there's any new information to present. We're just trying to create some forward pro- progress in the process itself by closing the public portion. And I believe that a town council did say that that was an appropriate way of proceeding.
I said either way was appropriate.
Right. And I think that the, the board members, at least, we haven't, we haven't actually taken a vote on this yet. I think people have spoken their individual, uh, points of view. And my point was simply that we had sequestered some topics in this list that we said we would come back to and we were going to reconfigure them. I think that would be considered so, it could potentially be new information. And the question is, if the meeting is closed, could we bring it in? Does that make sense?
Not if we close the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I deal is that we're sort of, you know, we just can't get it all done in one night.
During deliberations, you can ask the applicant a question, but you know, they're basically on hand to, to listen and watch.
Yeah. I mean, Adam, I think to your concern, where, you know, it's like Kara said, it's either way. And it's kind of semantic. At the end of that deliberation, we are going to vote. And so, you know, whether we end our deliberation and the closed hearing or an open hearing doesn't matter. I think the open hearing would be more advantageous to you guys so that you could at least submit something different if, if, if called, called for, you know, so. I don't think it makes any difference on the timeline.
Chip, sorry. I'll leave that up to.
Paul Grady and then Karis North.
We leave, Bob, the hearing open until the next one, in case something does.
I'm, I was just taking temperatures. I'm not asking for a vote, but I'm glad that you said that. So it sounds to me that we're going to leave the meeting open. I don't have a full, a firm vote on that, but it sounds like where we're going. All right. We have two more, uh, condition statements.
Madam Chair, can I just, could I just make a, make a, make a brief comment, which is, uh, to Attorney Brodsky's point about progress? I think that we have made significant progress. We're talking about conditions. We're going to continue to talk about conditions. And as Mr. Callahan said, um, leading to a vote. So I, I agree. I don't think it matters, uh, whether the hear, whether the hearing is open or closed will not interfere with the forward progress of this project.
I'm, I'm, I can, I, I need you to be a little bit clear about that, Karis. What are you speaking specifically uh, about from the standpoint of this moment and what we are doing?
I, I'm saying that all the work that you've done tonight and that you're talking about doing tomorrow, it, or next meeting is all forward progress leading towards, uh, an ultimate vote. And I don't think it matters. It will not, leaving the hearing, leaving the hearing open will not impede making that continuing progress.
Okay. That, that's what I thought. I, I, I wanted to make sure I was clear about that. Okay. So we have a, um, another, let's see. Um, I don't know it. So Lauren isn't here or she may be in the shadows. How, um, but I do have a, uh, shortlist here from Paul Grady. Okay. Lauren, can you bring Paul's conditions up?
Yes, let me locate those.
So Paul, would you like to speak to this?
No, it's just a question I've asked for a while. I've just wondered about the third party reviewer. Now I've asked this and I just haven't received. So this is something I was interested in. Is who is paying Weston Sampson? Is the developer paying him, um, the third party reviewer and inclusionary? We're going to talk about later. So my, my questions were pretty simple. Are they being paid by the developer or are they being paid by the town?
Laura Lynn?
They're being paid by the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go to my list. And, um, this is a procedural request and that is to have a uh, statement of definitions of terms that may be common in construction and architecture, but are not necessarily common to, um, uh, non-professionals. And each one of them is actually asking for a definition. So for example, all the way at the bottom, there's one called.
You just want to put the list in, in, into the, um, decision. For reference.
Yeah. Yeah. What I, what I feel is in, in making a statement about the items we've been reviewing, there's ambiguity in the words. You know, they, there are words that can be defined. And so I want to have words defined so that when I, when somebody says mixed use, it's like in the bylaw, or if they say detrimental, that is a, that is a, a subjective uh, measure, right? And so I want to know in the end, what we, how do we define those things?
So are you going to suggest a a definition description?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a, a table of definitions. Uh, Tom Callahan?
Well, I'll, I'll defer to Eve first, but Eve, go ahead.
Eve?
Madam Chair, thank you. Um, so I think that the way you define these are in your, in the board's findings, that you make the findings based on mixed use because it does X, Y, and Z, that you don't need a list of the, of a table of definitions, but the findings that we haven't really talked about today, we're working on the conditions are equally important and will explain how you came, how you believe this project, um, meets the requirements of the bylaw. And so the draft that, um, Lauren gave, um, lists all the findings that the board has to make, but they're not complete. She didn't, um, purposely, she wanted the board to fill in how they made those particular findings. And I think that's where you can explain exactly what you mean about each one of these particular terms, rather than just have a table of definitions in the, in the decision. I've never seen a table of definitions, but I have seen the findings, um, be very I've never seen a table of definitions, but I have seen the findings um be very specific about what you uh believe um the, the, the project does with regard to those um specific parts of the bylaw and the findings.
Okay, so you're, you, uh, Tom Callahan?
Yeah, I'm only, I'm only going to suggest that you don't try to define substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The court system and the law understands what that term means. Our definition, if we were to try to give one, isn't going to change that. I, 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 I don't think we need definitions here, but the law, the law knows how to deal with definitions on a regular basis. So nothing we add, I think, is going to change how the court would look at this if we were to get to that.
All right, I will accept that as the uh uh typical, typical protocol. Um, I will say that I think that there are terms that may not be um uh defined on an ongoing basis. So uh when we get down to some of the, some, of these all relate to something, they all relate to other things. Okay, so in tr- I didn't organize myself the way that Tom did. I o- organized myself according to um issues. And, and I broke it into organizational, design, traffic management, documenta- documentation requirements uh and verifying parking metrics and um and, and I didn't, I have it all as li- legalistically con- constrained because I'm not a lawyer. So what I did is I wrote what I thought. Um, and so I, um, I want to take on, I want to just raise some issues that I think uh have, have come up over the, this evening. And one of them is this whole question of the organization, the or, the governance structure. How is this actually going to work? And I have probably, you know, three or four references to that because I feel that that is really critical uh in really ensuring for the town that the objective of the creation of this special permit um is, is achieved. And um so I am interested in having before the project really gets, you know, at a, you know, post-approval, but before you're breaking ground is to work out the logistics of how the general homeownership uh um organization is going to work, that the uh business organization is going to work. And I would also say that, that, you know, we're not in a formal public-private partnership, but it seems to me that there are advantages to considering that as an organizational structure. And, but I recognize that that's tying you in a situation in which you may someday wish to leave from this particular business arrangement. But in a public-private partnership, there, what you try to do is, is create trust, right? And, and operational effectiveness. And so I, um, so my organizational issues in general relate to, I'll just piggyback my concerns on the question of how is it going to work? Who's going to set the terms? How will they be enforced? And who's going to be able to change them? Um, I made a comment about the traffic study and, and this is a just, I, I I make a request, but I also am a realist. I think that the intersection that we're going to be having a big project on is a very complex intersection. And the transportation study used the correct statistics for this type of study that they did, but they did not take into account the entire immediate environment around the area where there's going to be serious traffic problems. We know it from having the island now. Uh, and so my view is that by moving further toward the village and further toward a sandy beach and actually understanding that system of transportation corridor at this moment um is something which is going to be uh, uh, an issue. It's going to be an issue. Think about the turn downtown, that little snaky turn, right? When you go past Hingham Bank, how's that going to work, right? I mean, we.
Are you number four? Are you on number four?
That, that, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, so um, uh, but I, I, I understand the, the fact that I, that what we can request cannot go outside the boundaries or hundred feet one direction and the other from the project site. But I just feel that from the long-term perspective, understanding how to make this work from the beginning is a lot less expensive than trying to fix it at the end. So I won't, I, but I'm not going to um condition a, an additional transportation study because I don't have the right to do that. Um, I think that, that, that I, I would um require that the, uh, a condition that I would put is that the site has an evacuation plan and a plan for exterior materials that follow the Insurance Research Council and Mississippi's laboratory provisions. So that's the place in America where the insurance companies go to test materials against hurricanes and, and storm. It, it's the, it's the water side of the insurance industry. Um, and so I think we should be operating at that scale uh because this building is going to be there for fifty years.
Amy, you just went to number seven?
I did. The re- the reason it, why did I do that? Um, you're right, I did. Let me finish that one. I'll go back to five and six. So I basically want to see a um some type of strategy for changing climate and, and, and variability in, in weather and the um, the pro- the, the fact that we're at the water's edge. I want, I, I think an evacuation plan, some sense of what to do if a, if some type of a disaster happens. So that's, that's number seven. And then um I asked a lot, so here in number five, I say interpret the meaning of residential amenity spaces. I don't need to say anything about that because we've already discussed it. I, we already just discussed the whole question of the redesign of the garage and the easement. We don't need to talk about that one. I have after the discussion of a evacuation plan, required some type of flood barrier or, or some sense of how to harden the building against flooding. And you, you may or may not have any responsibility to do that or any plan to do that. But I feel like that's something that we're responsible to consider.
Well, that was a comment that I had in my list of uh flood control, whether there's pumps. And I don't know anything about the Mississippi laboratory provisions, but um, you know, it, the insurance um you know, making sure that the, the spaces are out of the floodplain. They have to be above elevation ten. So that the building is uh, is insurable and, and financial, financeable. Is, is something that they're going to have to do. But, but what are these count Mississippi laboratory provision?
Because, because if you're going to be looking, if, if you, you have two choices to get information about materials that you use, right? From a vendor or you go to the Insurance uh Research Institute in Mississippi, which has, is basically designed to test all the materials that could be used in an environment that is harsh, such as a, an area that would be affected by hurricanes, northeasters, et cetera. So that it's, it's a place to get information about what are the best possible materials you could use.
Like doors and windows or win trim or nails or.
It's also construction, it's also construction style. So, you know, they, they basically build a ru- building in a room and turn a hundred and forty mile an hour wind on it and see if they can blow it apart. And they then figure out how to make the building so it won't come unglued.
Well, we have a building code.
Well, I'm, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm making a point that the future isn't going to be the same as the present or the past and that these are going to be places that are going to be there for fifty years. So state-of-the-art materials to me would be a, an added value to any kind of project that's at the ocean. So i- i- this is just a, this is just something that I, that I think is important. We don't, you know, it's, it's maybe no one else does. So I go back again to the homeownership, the need of a homeownership organization. We need, which means we're going to be dealing with the public and private use conflicts. We haven't spoke, so that, so this is, these are just, again, you, rather than voting on all of these, these are, these are things that I'll pick out the ones that we really have to vote on. Um, liability insurance, we haven't talked anything about insurance, both um during the construction of the project, but we also haven't said anything about what will happen when the public uses the site. Charis?
Yeah, there's a, a public recreational use statute that would cover the uh public use of the site. So there's Massachusetts state law that, that takes care of that.
Okay, so um, so that means liability insurance or what does that cover?
It covers the liability of the um the, the owner of the site when it is providing public access on that site.
Okay, great. Um, we've covered in Tom's list, he covered a question about who was going to do the assessments over time as the project was being done. Uh, my view about the Airbnb, we have already dealt with. I raise a question of what established affordable housing or locational equi- uh, location equivalency means for the, the location of affordable housing? Because I know that you know that the value of living near the sea. So, so one of the things we don't know in the project is, is this, how will the ownership of the three affordable units work? Do we have any idea how that's going to go? There's something called shared equity. That, that I know about. Uh, George McGoldrick?
Uh, so there's a couple of different ideas that we're bandied around and talked with the Affordable Housing Trust with. Uh, for example, partnering with Habitat, uh, who is one of the most successful organizations in terms of creating affordable housing. And what they do is they provide the home and a long-term mortgage uh to the homeowners. Uh, there's other ideas that the Housing Trust uh would really like to see as well because it gets the units quicker. And that is deed, deed restricting existing units within the town. That automatically uh allows the town to, to put them into account. You don't have to wait for construction or anything else. And so that's another alternative that we're looking at, is looking at deed restricting. So what happens is a landlord may own a building that's got three units in it. Uh, he applies the D, D H C D, uh, puts a deed restriction on it. And um then therefore goes in, is counted uh towards the S H I for the town. So those are a couple of examples that we're working with the Affordable Housing Trust on. And again, what, what we've already committed to, uh, we didn't talk about yet tonight, but we, we've already committed to is not to do what the bylaw says and give a check to the town. We're going to create the housing one way or the other. So that's why we're working with the, with the trust on that.
Okay, so.
Mr. Jeffries has, has weighed in on the last meeting about it.
Okay, so my, my concern is that uh if you just simply take three units i- i- in Tom's original comments, he indicated it was, he, one condition would be that it was okay to put all the affordable houses in the West Building. Uh, and I wrote back and said, I thought that that was defeating the purpose of why we are, have a, an inclusionary zoning policy. And that for sure, from a financial perspective, as an individual, if I was able to buy one of the condos in the development and then I could send it, tell you, sell it ten years later, I certainly would make more money selling it ten years later if I lived in the harbor as opposed to if I lived someplace else in town. And so there is a question of equivalency.
Not if it's an affordable unit. Your, your, your resale value is restricted as well. You, you don't get the benefit of that because that's you, but anyway, it, there's some complicated process for that.
There are mechanisms by which you can have shared equity. So it's not that you can't do it, it's that it might not be done.
No, I, I believe it's the regulations, it's the forty B regulations and guidelines that D H C D puts out, uh, I, I believe. But we can, we can talk about that. Um, I know you, I know you have a lot of expertise in this area.
Well, I know it. It's that, it's just that from a, just purely economics perspective, it's, it's true. So the question is, do we deal with it? Do we have to think about it or do we not think about it?
Amy, 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 we've had a very productive meeting so far. I think it was because you kept everything so tight with regards to going through the numbers and voting on things and restricting discussions. And I'm just concerned we're getting more towards a monologue of ideas here and not working through them like you did with the other uh three of the three lists and just going number to number and voting and then having discussions on the items that we pushed out to your final list of things to go on. It, it's, it's been, we've gotten through a lot so far tonight. I'm just, I just, now it's, I just want to keep that kind of momentum going.
Okay, but the problem is, is that I have to go through and say, this doesn't count, this doesn't count, this doesn't count because we've already addressed it. That's what I'm trying to do. But the, one issue about the, the affordable housing um uh valuation is, is a separate issue. But, but one, uh, uh, George?
I forget exactly what meeting was, but we had significant discussion with this board about the placement of the housing and the reasons why not only we, but more so if the Affordable Housing Trust don't believe it makes sense to put the affordable housing within a high-end luxury. It might work in a rental complex, but you create uh significant issues between those that uh are coming in at an affordable rate versus those that are paying a much higher rate down the road. When those that are paying the much higher rate have control of the board and can make decisions such as we want to put a new roof on and then everyone has to pay for it. The terminology that Mr. Jeffries used was, we're setting them up for failure if you put them in this building. So we, we've already had this discussion at length with this board about doing it off-site.
No, and I'm not challenging that. All I'm saying is, if you were to think about what the equivalent value was to the individual, if they lived in the harbor versus if they live somewhere else in town in an affordable unit in which they were accumulating equity. If they own something in the harbor, they would be probably accumulating more equity. And so what is an equivalence when it comes to a situation like that? Because affordable housing, and why we even care about affordable housing is because it allows people to potentially build assets.
Yes, but it's also rent, rental product is sometimes more important for affordable housing candidates. And so that's why rental housing is a big piece of that, that doesn't allow the.
I, I'm just asking.
And those are, you know, like I said, those are two different things we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know, um, in terms of rental housing and keeping the, the rents low and subsidizing that or um, you know, a, a model such as Habitat for Humanity. But again, as Charis had indicated, even in a Habitat for Humanity house, you buy and own it. You don't get to get, that's necessarily market value for it. You're, you're locked into the, to a certain percentage each year.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm raising the question because we haven't discussed it. Uh, Eve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the issue has already been addressed. But I, um, I think this, the, when we pushed out the affordable, the question about affordable housing on everybody else's issues that these kinds of questions can be addressed at that time when we talk about it the next time. The, the thing that is the equity issue is that if it were in that um, in that big unit, it would have to have all the same granite countertops and it would have to look the same. You wouldn't be able to build one with laminate just because it was affordable. That's sort of the equity issue that and, but they would still have to sell it for the less amount of money. But I think we should move on to the next other issues because we're going to be talking about affordable housing in great depth next time.
Right, so the, my section on traffic management has generally been incorporated into the discussion that we put aside. In terms of documentation requirements, with the exception of requiring a LiDAR survey, the um, all of the other items have been captured in Tom's uh discussion of conditions. Uh, verifying parking metrics, this is parking metrics that were taken from the zoning board specifications. And I just wanted to make sure we were following them. So that's basically my contributions to the materials. We covered almost all the things that I was concerned about. my contributions to the materials. We covered almost all the things that I was concerned about. So, um, I would like to ask some assistance from Eve possibly and Lauren as to what did we put aside to take up in our next meeting? And, and no one's responsible for the right answer. We're all going to get the answer together, okay? Because we were going fast and we had a lot of stuff on the table and nobody could write it all down. Lauren?
Um, the items that I have, that I have kept track of are, um, affordable units, parking, and the ADA compliance spaces and the Elm Street redesign tie-in component.
Okay, so I think that the conversation around the, the Home Owner Association slash Public Private Space, we still are, have yet to discuss that in totality, I think. That's my recollection. There still is an open discussion about, um, a commercial versus residential amenity that's still open.
Building enforcement.
Reinforcement and inspection.
Yep, that's that.
The intersection.
Yep.
Somewhat of it. And then I had also written down materials for sidewalks and walkways.
Tom, can you put, take your hand away?
I'm sorry, I had, I also had down, so we're going to discuss the materials for sidewalks and walkways on the issue of ADA compliance versus vulnerability.
Okay, so affordable housing, parking, Elm Street redesign, residential amenity, building enforcement, intersection materials, ADA compliance.
On, on the, on the materials for sidewalks and walkways, I'm going to ask both Clark and John this. Is, is, I'm assuming there is some, uh, building code or architectural standard about what you can use for materials for a sidewalk to be ADA compliant?
No, it's really ADA compliance is more about slope. Um, you can use different materials, but the sidewalks that we're talking about, the, the plan would be to match the materials that are, um, existing. So, and work with the town on anything that's interfacing with the public way. So what we, what we have primarily out there are vertical granite curb and asphalt sidewalks, and then we would have to have accessible.
I'd, I'd like to think we can get beyond asphalt sidewalks. I, that, that was my question though, whether we had a range of materials that could still be ADA compliant.
There is, I just, sorry.
I was going to say it's easier to slope certain materials than others.
There is a discussion of sidewalks in the, um, Harbor Village Business Overlay District Design Guidelines. Um, so it talks about, uh, mixture of materials. But it also talks about
Well, yeah, I, I mean, perhaps the sidewalks that are out there around the site now remain asphalt as ugly as they are, but I would think that everyone in the green spaces and along the harbor would want something a little bit more attractive than that. And, and again, George, you mentioned there's a great change between the public and private space. I don't know how much that is, um, you know, whether something like pavement is even feasible. Yeah, but it would certainly be more attractive than black.
I, I mean, the reason the publicism, the DPW will own the sidewalk, the majority of the sidewalks that circumvent the site and within the public layout. So they have equipment to pay, to, uh, maintain and to plow, and so they have a same amount naturally. It's theirs.
Yeah, you're going to say black.
Okay, um, so we did have a discussion earlier, oh, and, and I see Eve, so, uh, we did have a discussion earlier about chapter 91, and I would like somebody to help clarify for me why it was that we thought that was going to clear cer- certain things up. Was, was that because of the issues that were related to the ocean side? I mean,
Yeah, so the chapter 91 license process and standard conditions includes, uh, public access requirements within and, and also does have in those standard conditions, which I've looked for and I haven't been able to find in the emails, but I'm sure that they're there and we'll make sure that they get circulated around to everybody. Uh, it has time of, of access and, and a whole, there's a whole regulatory scheme that is laid out that will provide, I think, some helpful guidance to the board to see what those conditions look like and that may address some of the concerns, um, without having to create things from from whole cloth. I'm not saying it's going to cover everything. Um, and obviously there will be an additional easement with respect to the, the perpetual access, but, you know, that's one place to start to look for language that is useful and that there is going to be a license for that, that area.
Okay, great. So then that will be linked to, uh, some of these sections. So for example, that particular, uh, comment you just made will probably relate to the open space specifications and things like that. So we will be able to find language for that. So then I think I could give Eve and Lauren the list of the terms, and we can just confer to make sure they're the same terms. Is anybody, I'll read them again in just a minute, but that then you could potentially start to locate the sub-information that we need to, to basically close these issues.
Yes.
Because we got all these little, you know, onesies, 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 and so we want to get them up under one thing. So if, if chapter 91 has the language that allows us to, um, complete feelings about the open space, that's where we want to get that. That, that's the source of information we could use. And I think a lot of these will fall that way. So the affordable housing's left, parking's left, Elm Street redo is left. Uh, residential amenity is still open, building enforcement, uh, we have language for that. In, um, materials, ADA compliance, uh, the bond at open space, uh, and, um, some aspect, I think, I think traffic is closed. I have to go back and look and see, but, um, okay, so Eve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I know we did skip all of Roman numeral five on, in Tom's draft, which is public amenities. And a lot of that, I think, deals with some of the open space, but it also talks about who maintains it and that kind of information. So I think that's important to go over.
Okay, so what
That deals with the governance of the, and the relationship between the two, and I would just, like I said before, I think we should write what we want to write, but we certainly, there's no reason we can't harmonize with chapter 91. So I wouldn't undertake a rewrite of that until I see what Adam and Harris want to suggest about chapter 91.
Okay, so we're, we're going to connect that to the homeowner, the homeowner association, the whole question of, and I'm going to rename it to governance. Okay, um, so it is 10:30. Eve?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I have one last question. So we've all been taking a lot of notes. And I know that Mr. Callahan has taken the lead in writing the decision. I'm asking whether or not, um, he's going to take the lead, or he wants to take the lead in revising the conditions as we discussed, and certainly the ones that we've already kind of made decisions on, or the board seems to have had consensus on. Or whether you'd like staff to try to put together, uh, make sure that the language works, um, as was discussed. And the, again, the board gets final decision over what the language is, but what do you want to do in the next two weeks? Does, does the board member want to do it, or do you want staff to try to undertake?
Right, right now, as I understand it, the staff has everybody's comments in Word format, and it's easier for them to do it. I mean, my, my personal preference is to be in control of the document, but that's, we've, we've gone through that and I, I'm not going to fight about that. So I would ask the, to the extent the staff can do it, based on their notes, and obviously we'll all compare our own notes, is try to take all the board members' comments, other comments that have come here tonight, and and at least the conditions section of the decision, try to combine it all into some new draft. Circulate that, and we can all, like I said, we can all amend it with our own recollections and notes. Uh, and go from there. And, uh, you know, I, 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 I think whether people want me to or not, once I see those chapter 91 conditions, I'll probably take a stab at writing something up.
So why don't we
So I, I, so let me be clear, I wasn't actually suggesting that the staff write any, on any of the issues that we haven't already decided, but we made some decisions on some of them, and so we can conglomerate them.
Right, I'm suggesting you conglomerate everything that you've decided.
And not, right, and not anything new. But the other question I had, the other question I had
Reorganize later.
Right, so the other question I had was, um, is everyone comfortable with us putting the conditions into the draft that, um, Lauren had submitted in, so the conditions are in order of how they are enforced, or do we want to keep it in a particular, because, um, they're not all written exactly?
My view is we want a standard format and a standard voice.
Okay, so we'll put them into the correct categories, obviously for the board to, to, um, decide, but just as a draft for everyone to be looking at, since we have control of all the documents in Word and everyone's been taking notes. And then at the next meeting, obviously, the board will then go over each one of those with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that we got everything correctly. But we're not going to make any changes and we're not going to address any of the issues that were not, the board did not discuss tonight. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would, I would just, I would just leave the things we left open, just leave the drafts the way they are.
Right.
We'll amend those later when we address.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, so let me ask Lauren and Eve, would it behoove you to have anybody turn over their notes to you for help, or do you feel like between the two of you, you'll have enough of the note material for this to, to go well?
I, I think that between the four of us, actually, including Karis and Jen, we'll put together what we have, and then the purpose of bringing it back to the board next time is that that's when we'll fill in whether we might have missed something. Um, I think that there are some places where there was consensus and there's some places that where there weren't, and we're only going to reorder and make minor edits as we discussed today, the way that we believe that the majority of the board agreed to them. And the ones that we're not sure of, we'll leave as is.
Do you mind, I mean, I took detailed notes about mine and Clark's conditions, what we
If you want to send them to us, that's great. That's, that's helpful. Yeah, if it's helpful, we'll take them, but we're not going to require everyone to give us the notes.
All right, so I'd like to then, um, draw this meeting to a close. Uh, Lauren?
I'm sorry, we just, we didn't have a moment for public comment. Uh, we do have, we had several attendees earlier, we've lost a couple. Um, so I just wanted to at this time remind if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, if you could insert into the Q and A. And with that, I also did, we received a letter that was requested to be read into the record. So if, Madam Chair, if, if you would be amenable to me reading that, I would do so at this time.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Um, uh, this, I received this this afternoon from Douglas McGregor. Um, the letter reads, "We, the undersigned residents in the butters of Cohesta Harbor are writing to express our continued support of the harbor project. This next statement is underlined. More specifically, we are urging the planning board to allow this project to move forward to the next steps by creating a defined finish line at the planning board." End underline. "We understand the applicant will still need additional detailed approvals before construction can commence, and we want those to begin. We also understand the board's cautious nature and commend it, but we want the board to know." Underline, "You have our support to approve this." End underline to the next steps. "We have paid attention, reviewed the plans, and have participated in many of the public meetings as best we can. We applaud the changes that have been made throughout the process and believe that the application underline meets all of the requirements set forth in the bylaw." End underline "The bylaw that many of us fought to create and get approved. We have no issues with the lowered unit count, height, massing, or overall program proposed. We believe the proposal will create a vibrant mixed-use development that includes a viable mix of commercial, residential, and public outdoor amenities for all to enjoy. COVID creates challenges to getting involved and being vocal, so we want this letter to make our voices heard. That we have been paying attention, communicating as a community, and that we underline, we support the planning board to move this project ahead. Please create a finish, finish line and then hold it in place so this applicant can cross that line the next step. End underline sincerely, Doug and Bridgette McGregor, 7th Border Street, Bradford Thomas, 46 Elm Court, Bill P. Stone, 6B Margin Court, Pam and Hugh Kelly, 15 Border Street, David Lisa, Dave and Lisa Fulton, 31 Border Street, Robert and Julia Rafferty, 9 Margin Court, Glenn and Margaret Holland, 17 Border Street, Anne and Andy Whitney, 50 Margin Street, Joe Guerra, 81 Elm Street, Travis and Elizabeth Moore, 15 Stockbridge Street. Just a few more names here. Lucy Tweedell, 65 Pond Street, formerly 85 Elm, Janet Fogarty, 114 Elm Street, John Jill and Brick Kavel, 83 Elm Street, Jeff and Steph Roberts, 68 Summer Street, Lynn Prebet, 65 Pond, Deb and Tom, Nobaleen, 3 Border. That concludes that statement. At this time, I see no additional comments in the Q and A section, so I will turn it back to Madam Chair. Thank you.
That's, that's the letter you distributed this afternoon, the same one?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have one more piece of business, and that is to discuss and vote on whether we will, um, close or keep this meeting open and carry it forward to, uh, December 16th. Can I get a, um, motion?
Motion to leave the meeting open.
Can I get a second? Okay, all in favor? Clark Brewer? Clark Brewer? Paul Grady? Tom Callahan? Uh, excuse me, I may have done something not exactly right. Lauren?
I'm sorry, you have to, um, make a motion to continue to a date and time certain, so you just have to, um, re-amend the motion to continue to December 16th at 6:30 P M.
I see, yes.
On, on that regard, is there a problem of us doing it next week?
What's wrong with December 16th?
Less closer to Christmas, not, I don't know if that matters to anybody's scheduling or lives, but if is it possible to do this this ninth, and then in case we need the 16th as well?
No.
All right, I'm just bringing it up.
Okay, so, uh, Eve?
I, I think you guys already answered it, but I was just going to say that it seems like there's a little bit of work that the staff has to do to put together all that we did today. And that we want to be able to give it to the board in enough time to have them look at it. If we do it next week, that means we have to finish it by Friday, which doesn't give us a whole lot of time. So to do it correctly.
Okay, so Lauren, I was conditioning whether or not we would keep it open or closed, but I knew we were still going to have a meeting. So what order of those two re, um, motions should I do? Should I do the order of leave it open or not, and then, uh, what, uh, um, continue the meeting for date and time?
Well, Madam Chair, what I would suggest is if, um, a member was to make a motion to continue the hearing, it would just do both of them at the same time.
I see, okay, thank you. So can I get a motion to continue the hearing?
Motion to continue hearing till December 16th. Is that good?
Thank you.
6:30 P M.
On Zoom.
May I get a second? Uh, Tom Callahan, uh, Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Paul Calery?
Paul Calery, aye.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? Uh, thank you, uh, Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye, and thank you to Tom, Clark, and Amy for all the time and effort you guys put in, putting all those conditions down. As a board member and a citizen, I think, uh, we're indebted to that. So thank you, guys.
Uh, Paul Calery brings up the, uh, show.
Aye.
There we go, all right, we will, we got, we did get through a lot We go, all right, we will, we got, we did get through a lot of stuff, so we'll we'll be thinner at the next meeting.
Four hours and fifteen minutes.